Thank you. Today is Monday, September 12th at 6:30 PM. I bring the Board to Selectmen Meeting, scheduled for this evening, to order our first order of business in the Pledge of Allegiance. I would ask Lynn Briggs if you would lead us in the pledge, please Lynn.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
As always, we have a Citizens Forum scheduled at the beginning of the meeting. This would be an opportunity, if there are any attendees in the meeting, whether you're in the room or with us via Zoom, to address the Board if there was anything you wanted to address the Board about. This in all likelihood would be the only opportunity during the meeting to do so. So if there's anybody in attendance electronically or in the room that wants to be heard, Lynn, you can, anyone stand up to the microphone and speak to us from the microphone, please. I'm sorry?
I need you to be up. Go on, so I can see you. Can I sit there?
Sure. We, I will, come on up, I'll just speak as you come up. We have a busy agenda, I'm not sure what you have in mind, but-
I'll make it quick.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
I'm just going to go ahead and read the letter to you, and I've given you a New Hampshire Constitution. My glasses on. So essentially, this is written testimony for public record in the minutes of the meeting. I come here in the spirit of truth and fairness. I hope that the information presented, I will, and I will be accepted in that manner. The point of this presentation of evidence and fact is that you understand that you are the responsible party. Article 38 of the New Hampshire Constitution gives me the right to exact and constant observation of my representatives in the formation and execution of the laws necessary for the good administration of government. I am exercising my right under Article 8 of the New Hampshire Constitution via the 91A and right to know law. Voting rights and procedures are of great interest to the inhabitants of the state of New Hampshire, as demonstrated by the recent enactment of the New Hampshire Committee of Voter Confidence, which was initiated by the New Hampshire Secretary of State in 2022. We have amassed vast amounts of new evidence and testimony which is being heard presently and has continued over the last four months. The New Hampshire Constitution of 1784 was never amended by the General Court, otherwise known as the Legislature. It was never amended to move from sort and count ballots in an open meeting to counting, to machine counting of election ballots. In 1784, there was no electricity, we all know that. It is the duty of the Supreme Court to act on original intent because it was never amended. Selectmen, town clerk, and moderator, per the New Hampshire Constitution, were the only people responsible for counting votes. Nowhere in the New Hampshire Constitution is it stated counting must be completed in one day. RSA 656:40 is a 38-year-old RSA, under the color of law, which is unconstitutional, authorized the selectmen to use, on a trial basis, which is actually three years, the AccuVote voting machines. Trial is defined as test of the performance or qualities or sustainability. Where is Amherst testing, resulting data, and documents against what models? And additionally, clearly, 38 years is not considered a trial period. The Amherst selectmen have personally sworn an oath to defend the New Hampshire Constitution. I believe the Board's malfeasance and continuing unconstitutional actions makes you culpable. Exhibit 1, which is in the back. I did serve a remonstrance and notice of trespass on March 1st, 2022, of which I have not received any sort of answer to date. On February 1st, excuse me, on February 11th, 2022, there was a meeting at the New Hampshire Department of Justice. Deputy Counsel Madison and Investigator Dick Tracy confirmed without reasonable doubt the selectmen are the sole responsible party, regardless of town vote, to approve and authorize voting machines under RSA 656:40, as well as directly responsible for the purchase, maintenance, programming, software, security, chain of custody, and operational use. I can get you affidavits if you want those, I didn't want to make this too big. Two, in light of the above, I have a few questions. You can read that. I would like to identify the persons, person or persons or company that will oversee the change of policy and procedures to assure compliance for the following. A, the New Hampshire Department of Justice and Secur-, um, excuse me, Secretary of State's office has no chain of custody for documents. They have no policy and procedures. And I know you're not going to answer these tonight, so I'm submitting these to get an answer, please. We need to know where are the processes for the above, for chain of custody, policy, and procedures? Specifically, software training, program review, maintenance review, software security, hardware evaluation, and replacement standards, ID verification on the LHS, which is the company that provides the maintenance and programming of your memory cards, or contractors working on our machines, as we, the people, we, the voters, we, the citizens of Amherst, and you, the selectmen, the town, own these machines and the ballots. We also need to know the process for certification. B, all machines and software are vulnerable to hacking, as we know. What protocols and security measures will you have in place before the next election? I know it's tomorrow, so I'm going to imagine it's November. The last approved update for security measures implemented by the Ballot Law Commission was 12 years ago, April 9th, 2010, and I am happy to say that the town has done this security update, and I have made that as exhibit two, which is, you know, kudos to our town and our town clerks for keeping up with this when many towns have not. Three, federal law 52 USC 20701 requires these voting materials retention requirements be held securely for 22 months by the town. I'll let you read through that. It appears Amherst has surrendered oversight, audit, and chain of custody requirements over the counting device, processing chips, and memory cards for the town's back-to-LHS associates. That, in fact, is a violation of federal law. I also have copies of all of that, if you need that, but they are in the file downstairs with Laverne. 52 USC 20701, retention and preservation of records and papers by the officers of elections, deposit with custodian, penalty for violation, from Title 52 Voting and Elections, subtitle 2, Voting Assistance and Election Administration, Chapter 207, federal election records, so you can look to that. The action items I would like before the next election, which again is impossible before tomorrow, for the record, I would like, for the record, LHS Associates in Salem, New Hampshire is a private company with a 38-year no-bid contract. LHS is the contractor for Dominion AccuVote machines in New Hampshire. LHS sells, maintains, and replaces all hardware, programs all software, and prints ballots for local elections. Question mark, conflict of interest. LHS is also the exclusive provider for six New England states, including New Hampshire, which accounts for 33 of the Electoral College votes. New Hampshire has three of them, as you know. So my questions are as follows. This is going to be entered into the record, right? You don't want me to read them?
We will let you enter the record, I'll make sure that this is a part of-
Okay, so in the, in the, in, just so you know, there's all these questions here, and if they can be entered into the record, that'd be great, I won't read them to you. So my question is, will the Amherst selectmen take corrective actions and audit recommendations learned, SB 43 added reference, which is above, that have been enacted and implemented to date? Public notification, additional personal and bond risk assessment for town officials is listed below. New Hampshire Law Section 65942, tampering with electronic ballot counting devices is a felony. It's a violation of OSHA Regulation 1910.399. I won't read it, because you're going to put it in the- Amherst AccuVote machines have not been evaluated or approved by the U.S. Election Assistant Commission Testing and Certification Program. The questions are as follows, underneath, and as I said, as I opened, the general, on March 1st, 2022, I served eight out of 10, with eight out of 10 county representatives. I served personally the General Court of New Hampshire, the Secretary of State, the Department of Justice, and the Governor via a memorial remonstrance and an affidavit of trespass infringement on constitutional rights regarding the unconstitutional use of electronic voting machines. To date, I have not received an official response from the state or Amherst. I would like to know Amherst's intentions, as I believe I have been denied my civil rights, as well as fair and just process. Okay. In closing, I'll skip through that for you. Return, we would like to immediately, for the election cycle, which would be November 2022, return, per the, per the New Hampshire Constitution, to return to sort and hand-count the ballots. Follow the tenets of the New Hampshire Constitution, the sworn duty of the selectmen to protect and defend it, or you may be challenged in your professional and personal capacity. For hand-count is the only proven way to protect our sovereignty and our right to vote in a free and fair election. Until such time, the New Hampshire Constitution is properly amended. When there is an issue with the temporary AccuVote machines or a recount, amazingly, the backup and acceptable procedure is to resort to hand-counting of same said ballots. I also believe hand-counting will also restore civility and build community, as all parties will be forced to sit with each other and perform the sacred and civic duty to sort and count ballots. I deliver this in the spirit of truthfulness, fairness, and justice for all. I thank you specifically, the town clerks, who have gone above and beyond in their openness and unwavering attention in providing me with the documents asked for by my 91A. I did do the memorial remonstrance with all the signatures and dates from the state. I also did all the ones from the town of Amherst. I did the affidavit. I also added a couple more pages that you can read through. And I did add the latest maintenance and tabulator report from LHS, which was done on August 25th, 2022. And when you look through it, you'll see there are only two signatures. There were supposed to be three, and the third is supposed to be someone that is not the town clerk or the maintenance person. There is also no record of exactly what was changed, any serial numbers, or that the hardware replaced is manufacturer-approved. So we don't know where they come from. The second piece that I gave you is, second packet, is from my expert witness. And this was just filed, this is a complaint that was filed this morning, so submitted and officially notifying the state of New Hampshire, the Attorney General, the Secretary of State, OSHA, and the Department of Labor, as these AccuVote Diebold machines are a hazard to operate, not, they are not safety UL certified, per the Secretary of State. I wasn't able to print it out quickly, but he, on April 9th, 2010, gave the order to town clerks in every town to cut the wires and the ribbons of the modem. He actually stated that in court on Friday at Rockingham County Court, where I was as a witness, and the state admitted to that. So since that point, and the cutting and the changing of that hardware, they have never been certified. And that's a huge safety problem, as well as a security problem.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your straightforward- Anyone else? Linda? Linda, please keep it brief, we have a lot to get through this evening.
I understand that you want to keep it brief, but understand that-
And please also identify yourself.
Linda Kaiser, Sixth Manchester Road. I think the Constitution of the United States and of the state of New Hampshire, which is by far stronger than the Constitution of the United States, gives all citizens the right to speak. It does not give the Board the right to say, hurry up. This election violated federal law. I have pointed this out to you, others have pointed this out to you. Those memory cards were destroyed within two months after the election. That is in direct violation of federal law. To this date, like Lynn said, not one of us has been given an answer as to why all of you permitted it, why the moderator permitted it. We had one machine that had double the Democrat votes as Republican. When I brought that up, I was told, oh, that's because all the absentee ballots went through that machine. Well, when I checked with the people who put in the absentee ballots, that wasn't true. I was a ballot clerk, we sit there and we do absentee ballots all day long, and they go to the machine that's not busy. Machine number one, when it came out, had a date of October 27th, as the time the votes were counted. Nobody can explain that, no one has cared to explain it. So while I understand that you have a busy agenda tonight, my concern is the Constitution of my country, and it should be your concern as well.
Thank you. Anyone else in the audience or with this electronically care to address the Board? Yes? If you can, make your-
Can we talk about anything on this?
Yes.
Okay.
Please start by identifying your name and your address.
My name is Jessica Blaze Leo. My son Chandler lives on Old Post Road, or he was the young man who got in that car accident. He lived on Old Manchester Road in Amherst. So, I'm sorry. I'm here to hopefully see if you guys can approve the stop sign on Cricket Road and Boston Post Road. If there was a stop sign, hopefully, I believe that he would still be here. And I'm trying to prevent another accident from happening again. I'm asking as a parent, if you guys can just consider that, please. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience that would care to address the Board? I do have a hand up, Jennifer Kelly?
Yes, I just promoted her.
Thank you.
Kelly Mullen, 48, Christian Hill Road.
Hi Kelly.
I want to echo the sentiments of this prior speaker. I had to take my son to his first wake of one of his lacrosse teammates, and that was Chandler Leo. Please do something to make that road safer, please. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that cares to speak to the Board? Thank you. We'll move on to item number three, it's a board appointment. We have an application from Martha Chabinsky to the Historic District Commission. I think possibly Jennifer, is Martha with us?
She's going to be joining us shortly after 7 o'clock.
Okay, so we will come back to that. And we will move on to number five, is one scheduled appointment with Chris Gentry. Chris, please feel free to come up and have a seat at the table. Chris is here to speak to us. I'll let Dan, Dean introduce this, but Chris has worked with Dean to help us move forward on our cable, excuse me, our television Comcast contract. And if you would introduce Chris in the subject.
Yeah, we discussed this at the last meeting. We've been working on the cable franchise agreement. We, since before I got here, there was a cable committee. And at the last selectmen's meeting, the selectmen asked me and Chris to get together with Brian Christensen, who's a representative of Comcast, to look and see if we couldn't put together, see if we could move this process along some. And so we did that, we met with him. The Board also is aware that some of the members of the cable committee don't like what we came up with, but Chris is here to explain why we did what we did and what the benefits to the town are going to be.
Chris, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Basically, I was asked to take a look at your franchise agreement. Most people would say, why? This would actually be my fourth franchise agreement that I've worked on. I've also worked on Concord, Edford's, assisted at Milford's, as well as Plymouth's. So I guess, yeah, four. Looking at your old contract and talking with Brian Christensen, we also had Dean there, working with us. Your old contract was actually out of date by probably about 10 to 15 years. The languages have changed, so have the laws. Most of the updating that we did in the contract that we had negotiated has to do with RSA 53C, also updating to the current version of the Cable Act, which is the 1997 version, as well as a 2013 update. There has also been some movement at the FCC in the past two to three years, which provided for in-kind to be basically taken off by Comcast or any other franchise for that matter. So in those discussions, we have updated the contract to make the necessary adjustments to refer to those specific laws. Some of the benefits, however, that would be provided to the town of Amherst actually are related in Section 6 in the contract, and that would be towards the peg channels and such. Starting off with, we would be able to request a third channel for us to be able to put as an HD-specific channel. Currently, you guys are sitting at an old copper wire, not fiber. You are at standard definition. So we also have a provision in there to upgrade to standard definition at a higher rate. In other words, for those techies who would be basically giving you a widescreen version of that particular standard definition. The HD channel would basically be considered your third channel, similar to what other stations throughout the state have, which would be like a public channel, however you could adjust accordingly, that is up to the Board and basically their designate. But the provision is there. Further down on six, we also had a section where we put in the technology fund. Currently, the technology outside, as well as in the back, could use for better services. In other words, this one just helped out the broadcast side of things. This would also help with your integration with Zoom, also make sound inside the room a little bit more comfortable. Could also provide other services to the folks in the room, and has the possibility to add other technologies, such as possibly putting in something in front, so that way you guys don't have to turn to a screen in order to see exactly what you're looking at if somebody is presenting. So these are benefits that could help out those in the room, as well as those at home. Like I said, this could be through there, the Zoom integration or integration with anything else for that matter. The provision in there is under Section 6.3, 6.3, is a technology fund. We were able to negotiate $150,000 over the course of 10 years. Now, that's the significant change to the contract, is that instead, in the past, I know that you had requested a five-year, this one actually provides for 10 years. Now, the benefit of the 10-year contract is that it does hold. Now, keep in mind, this is not an exclusive contract. Nowhere, because of federal law, as well as the state laws, no cable company can have an exclusive franchise contract with any town or other franchisee. So don't think that down the road, somebody can't come in and also create a franchise contract.
I'm sorry, Chris, go ahead.
Also, the, the franchise, I know that some folks might be a little confused. The franchise does not actually have anything to do with phones or IP-based businesses such as streaming or networking. This is for cable only. But that $150,000 would be provided in such a way that it would be in the first year, you get $60,000 to bump everything else in the room, or wherever you may decide, as far as the technology fund goes. Then it would provide for $10,000 a year for the next nine years after. The benefit of that is that it, once you do your upgrades or whatever it is that you need to do in order to provide for the service, it also provides for you to do, say, a 10-year plan to further be able to keep all of your technology up to date and, once again, more integrated with the upcoming technologies. Before I continue, is there any questions?
Anyone?
Okay. Now, we also went over some of the things that are notable. However, they haven't changed significantly is where the origination capacities are from. Here is one of them, School District is another one, and there's a couple others that are provided under 6.4 that I'm not sure that you guys may have known about. But we did continue to keep them in there, and we will continue, I always say we, you guys will continue to have access to those portions. We still have, this is under the Exhibit A, which provides for where you get basically free basic cable in the different town buildings in order to provide for emergency services and such, to be able to have that communication if there was ever an emergency.
Mr. Ma, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to add two more buildings, Chris, to Buck Meadow, which we've taken over, as well as Recreation Office.
And that would be something that we can certainly bring up to them and see if they are willing to do it.
Okay. As well as in this next 10-year period, can some paragraph be added in, as well as any additional buildings which may either be purchased or built?
So during the provision of the technology fund, some of that money can go towards that direction. As far as setting up in certain buildings and such, that has to be basically negotiated, which we could talk to, which is what is called a side letter. So if there's a new building that is created, we can go to Comcast and certainly ask for a side letter to provide for it, and then it would be added into the next franchise.
Okay, so I'm not sure, Tom, but I think you're referring to the Exhibit A at the end of the contract, or the Exhibit A is the public buildings on the cable system, not those that have, you know, broadcast equipment, so.
That's correct. That is correct.
Thank you. Okay.
All right?
Yes.
So, long story short, that's what the, this is the current contract that we have. I think that it would have huge benefit to the town, to be able to, like I said, do further integrations, create more kind of a way to make it more available to other folks within town. I know that there have been some arguments made that, why are we even doing a contract of five years, 10 years? Well, if it's a kind of a, it may seem like an unstable, older portion, but quite frankly, I don't see this going away anytime soon. And being able to get what we need to be able to provide further streaming services down the line, mind you, there are some, there's some, I'm trying to think of the word for it. It's not litigation, but there are some appeals that are currently going through to also provide streaming as a, considered to be cable network. That's something that's in the process, has been for about a year, or two years, rather, that caught up in the COVID stuff. So it's, should be starting to read in the next probably a year or so. So it's something to look forward to as well.
Right, thank you. Right, thank you. If you mind answering questions, if there's anybody on the board that might, since you're the guy that understands this probably the best.
Absolutely.
Bill, any questions or thoughts?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, just a couple. Chris, you've negotiated these with other towns. How does this one compare with the others you've negotiated? Are we getting a good deal?
I believe you are. I can tell you from experience that a lot of times when you don't, this is as far as the peg side of things, where you're getting the technology fund, it's hard to be able to get it in the future. If you have it, which you guys have technically had it, with the exception of the gap that we've had for not having a contract, once you lose it, it's hard to get it back. Now, keep in mind that places like Concord, they're getting $525,000. Believe it or not, with only getting the $150,000, it will actually lower the bill for monthly as opposed to what it was before.
So as I have heard your discussion, whether or not cable TV is, you know, declining or not, we still do have people who use that, who view
Absolutely.
our town meetings on it, and this will provide a, should provide a quality upgrade for them, the quality of the video and audio, because it switches to digital, should be better, correct?
That is correct. If I may give a quick anecdote, as some of you know, I actually do, I do run a community TV station in a neighboring town. I have a lot of elderly that don't know how to do streaming, don't want to know how to do streaming, but when there's a meeting that doesn't get up on the channel, they get very upset because they have no other way to see it. And that's not just live, I'm talking replays too. The channel goes down for a couple of days, they don't know what's going on in town as far as participating in meetings. They can't always make it to the meetings. So to kind of, in my, and this is just my opinion, this is not the opinion of others, but to get rid of this completely would be, and put it completely streaming, would be a huge detriment to our older community members. That being said, I think that it's not just the older community members that watch it, and I think that as it currently sits, because I have helped in the back a couple of times to get you guys back on, quite frankly, there are only three people in the entire Northeast, myself included, that know how to use that system in the back, and that meeting, the modulators that you have that currently go back to Comcast. Those modulators, you can't even buy them anymore, they stopped making them 10 years ago. That's how outdated it is.
So the other major benefit I see is the integration with Zoom. The board did a great job, and the staff did a great job during COVID of getting Zoom up and running. It's amazing. But it is kind of patched together, and I think it makes sense for our ability to communicate with the public to move to a system where we have much better integration, and it sounds like we'll be able to do it with this agreement.
I would agree. As long as you guys take that technology fund and put it in that direction, absolutely.
Right. No more questions, thank you, Chris.
Thank you. Tom?
Yeah, Chris, you answered my question before, so I have no other questions. I want to thank you for the effort and time and effort you put into this. It really helps the town of Amherst. Thank you.
You're welcome.
So perhaps you could summarize for me the benefits to the town of signing a 10-year deal?
So signing the 10-year deal actually provides a benefit, a few benefits. Number one, you have the longevity of the contract. If you do a five-year and Comcast decides that they don't want to stick around, they can hoof it. You got 10 years. Number two, that your franchise-related costs and such, they, instead of being as high as they were, they drop, which means that, like I said, your monthly bill will drop. How much, I can't tell you because I don't know. But you will have a drop in your bill based on that. The 10-year contract also guarantees that Comcast will be here, even if they decide that they want to go completely streaming, they still have to provide for the town, and they still will have to provide the monetary values and everything else that is incorporated in there. You hold down to that, and also if another company decides that they want to come into town, which is not unheard of, it's rare, but it's not unheard of. In fact, I know Concord is currently working on a second franchise agreement. Then you basically have a baseline that the other one has to hit minimally before they can, you know, provide you better offers or servers, services.
You touched on this before, but some of the technology we're using is antiquated, to say the least. Why would we want to stay with antiquated technology getting even more antiquated?
Well, here's the thing. When you upgrade in the back there, as far as that stuff goes, now you're going to be up into the current decade, and that expansion is going to stay there. There's possibility of expansion based on the type of technology that they put in in the back. It will stay there, and you will continue to be able to use it. Basically, what they do is they add more to provide for higher-quality services as they go on, okay? The other aspect of this is that, I'm sorry, I just spaced. Can you say that again?
Can I make a comment though, while he's, you know, thinking?
Yeah.
One of the things, one of the reasons that Zoom has been problematic from the beginning is that the technology that we had back there didn't really allow us to plug in anything that we needed to run Zoom. I mean, we're running the Zoom sound out of a headphone jack because there was no place else to put it. We weren't able to tie in to the cameras that we already had here, which is why you have one view back there, because the board didn't allow us to plug any more, plug Zoom into the cameras. So, I mean, just in terms of even if we're moving ahead with Zoom, because people like that, we want to keep the other, because like you said there, people will count on it. What we have now is what has made that much more difficult over the last two years than it needed to be. I mean, you know how many times we've had trouble with sound and we had trouble with this? And it's because of the equipment that we had, we were trying to put, you know, a 21st century program into, you know, 20th century equipment.
So is this agreement going to upgrade all of our equipment to the 21st century?
With that technology fund? Yes, it has that capability.
The technology fund, are you referring to is the $150,000?
That's correct.
Right, that money is actually coming from the cable subscribers.
That's correct.
You don't have the magic pot of money that you just dispensed that from. You raise that money from the people who pay for the cable service.
Sure do.
And get part of it back to the town. If we decided we needed $150,000, it would be more honest to ask the taxpayers to give it to us so that we could do this and be unencumbered by a contract with, whether it's an antiquated technology or not. I was on this board five years ago when we did a five-year deal, and part of our thinking was in five years, 5G may be much more prevalent than it actually has been. It turns out Consolidated has gone pretty heavily into the fiber optic route, which Comcast does not. So I'm not sure that a 10-year deal locking us into Comcast model is going to benefit the town in the long run. I'm more inclined to go with a five-year deal.
And that's certainly your prerogative. I'm just giving you the best that we can get you. If you do the five-year deal, you're going to lose a lot of stuff. I'm telling you that right now.
Like what?
Well, all of your technology fund will probably go out the window. Then you're also looking at, and if it doesn't, if you keep it, then it will raise the franchise-related cost. You'll also be looking at not getting that HD channel. There will be questions about updating the SD to the SDI and whatnot. That is a contract that, in the past, we've tried to do a five-year for stuff like that, and Comcast just wouldn't go for it. We can always put it forward to them, see what they say, but honestly, and this is my God's honest opinion, I don't think that it's going to be a successful negotiation.
Well, I'm not sure I see the benefit of locking the town into a 10-year contract with Comcast, when Comcast technology is not even state-of-the-art.
Well, that's certainly your prerogative as select, and that's your choice. Like I said, I'm just trying to provide the best that we can provide for you.
Well, thank you for your information, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Hi, Chris. Speaking of that $150,000, I believe you said that's over the 10-year period, correct?
That's correct.
So that's, you said $60,000, then $10,000 for the next nine years?
That's correct.
Is that correct? Okay. And we, there was some mention in an email about, I just wanted your take on it, that legacy benefits have been removed. What did we lose from the last contract, in your opinion?
Honestly, you didn't really lose anything. The nature of the contract is now based more on the laws, which are stricter than the actual liabilities and such that were put into place on the previous contract. The other thing that they consider lost is actually provided for, by the FCC, there was a recent ruling, I believe that was the 2019, 2020 ruling where they provided for in-kind. So basically, the cable companies could say that anything that they provided to a town, whether it be for peg access, whether it be for a network that, you know, fiber lines that go between government buildings, instead of basically them paying for it, which is part of the reason why we can't get it directly from them, the FCC made the ruling that they can now take it directly from the cable franchise or the subscriber ultimately.
And I just had one more comment. I like Tom's idea of putting cable in Buck Meadow in the rec department, and I don't, I'm not sure if that's something that we could do sooner rather than a side letter that
Well, that's something we can ask them.
Take effect, but wait on the line.
It would, it would not be immediate, I'll tell you that right now. I think right now, a lot of the stuff is looking, and this is by no means an actual date, but they're looking at 10 to 12 months for a lot of things, certain things they're looking at 16.
Yeah, that's better than a couple, you know, 10 years or the next one.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you, everyone. I've got a couple of questions. Chris, when it, Section 3 speaks of the area to be served, and it sets a density requirement of, what is it, 20 units per aerial mile. Is that something which is necessary in the agreement? Do you think that that is a deal breaker for them?
So that is standard. That is a standard contract piece. Pretty much every contract that they've been negotiating over the past about 20 years has that same standard language in it. And a lot of that has to do with the provisions of folks that live, you know, a certain distance from the main trunk line. Usually, if you ask them, Comcast is not that upset to provide if, when necessary. But it also creates a, makes it so that way if they can't, if it doesn't seem like it is monetary, like if they can, how do I put this? It makes it so that way if it is too expensive basically to do it, it gives them an out. That is something that has been in place in every contract for even past when I was first seen that first.
Thank you. And a question for you or John or whoever else might have an answer, the five-year versus the 10-year. I wonder if the fact that this contract is not exclusive and would allow another provider to come in town and compete, if that doesn't help somewhat in that?
From my point of view, it helps somewhat. The fact that it would take us a year to get all town buildings hooked up to this thing does not speak very highly of Comcast's ability to respond. I understand the non-exclusive is a relatively new feature, and we could conceivably be negotiating with Consolidated at the same time we sign the deal with Comcast, but I suspect that the package would be more valuable to Consolidated if it also included all the town buildings and the town's channels and so on. Whereas if that's all locked up with Comcast, then there's very little the town has to offer Consolidated other than come in here and see if you can get some people to sign up. So it's not that I'm hard and fast against it, I just don't see the advantage of locking ourselves into 10 years. I find it hard to understand how with a five-year deal, there's no $150,000 to the town, and somehow the rates are going to go up to the cable subscribers. That seems like funny arithmetic to me.
Well, it's not mine.
Anyone else in light of comments that have been heard, Dean? All right, we've got it on our agenda later to decide what we're going to do about the contract, so we don't need to do that right now unless anybody thought that we should. Appreciate your time, Chris, particularly the time leading up to this meeting and the effort that you've put into it has been very helpful regardless of what we do. Thank you. All right, we will move on to strategic plan presentations. We have three of them scheduled for this evening, starting with administration, finance, strategic plan. Dean, while you're bringing that up, I just want to, oh, she is, okay. All right, so we will back up to item number four on the agenda. Martha, are you there and can you hear me? Martha, this is Peter Lyon speaking. Can you hear me? I can see that you're there, but you're muted.
Yes, I can. Yes, I can.
Thank you. So thanks, thanks for coming into the meeting, I appreciate it. We have your application for a vacant position on the Historic District Commission, and I just wanted to give you a moment to speak to the board and indicate your interest in that position.
We have lived in town for 25 years. I grew up, my parents were antique dealers, my husband and I have been antique dealers. I grew up in old houses. I grew up in Harvard, Massachusetts, it's the center of town, and I appreciate it for that. We did buy a contemporary house, the last house we had was an interesting interlude by when we moved back to New England, we wanted an old house again. And so we love living in an old home, and I think it's incredibly important to maintain the antique homes, not strictly exactly the way they were 150 or 200 years ago, but in a way that, that modern life can be carried on. But there's a respect for the beauty and proportions and the craftsmanship of the homes themselves. So I know that there are not enough people on the, on the board, and I know it's very important that there be enough people to be able to make good decisions. So I thought this would be a good way for me to serve the town. I've not done that since we've moved here. I spent many years volunteering for AFAS, 26 years volunteering and hosting, and I said I'd done my volunteering, so I wasn't going to volunteer anymore, but this is very important to me, very close to my heart. So that's why I made the application.
Thank you, and thank you for your interest in, in serving the town. I'm going to check with individual board members to see if they have any thoughts or questions that they'd like to share. Tom?
Just looking up now, so it gets a commission, see how long her term would, would be.
So I've got, there was a little background work done already, and I'm told that we have a term ending 2023 as well. have a term ending 2023 as well, the term ending 2025.
Okay. Okay. No, no question, I've known Martha for quite a while, so I know the interest she has, and I think she'd be a good addition.
Thank you. John?
I have no questions, and I thank you for your willingness to serve.
Yeah?
I don't have any, well, one question. We did just mention that there are two terms, two seats open, one that ends next year and one that ends in '25, so I, I think maybe when you get on speaking, you might say which one that you are, prefer. And I've read your letter of application, and I, I think you would be a good fit as well. I think your historic background and knowledge and passion for history would be a, a good fit there.
Martha, I don't have any questions, but let me add my thanks to you for, for being willing to serve.
Thank you.
So Martha, I don't know if you heard, but we have two different terms ending.
Yes.
And do you have a preference as to which one you would be appointed to?
I don't, whichever one you guys want to do.
Okay. All right. Is there anybody that cares to make a motion?
Move to point Martha Chabinsky, who are a member of the Historic District Commission, term to expire in, to, let's go with '23.
Second.
Questions or comments in the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor.
Aye.
Martha, that was a unanimous vote in favor of you, and again, thank you very much.
You're welcome. All right. Excellent. Get started this week.
Very good.
Okay, great. Thank you.
All right. So Dean, while you're getting set, I just thought we could interact with Ways and Means for a minute. Peter, did you want to introduce or?
Thank you. I'm Peter Mustakis, the Assistant Town Moderator. I'd like to introduce you all to Town Ways and Means Committee for the, for the FY24 term. The Town Ways and Means Committee is responsible for reviewing and reporting on the town budget. This year's chair will be Lori Mix. There will also, we will also have Wendy Rainenberg, Michael Patterson, Diane Leighton, Tom Cook, Tom Sylvia, Andrew Pataki, Russ Hodgkins, and Steve Bozenow, Bozenowski, excuse me. And thank you.
Thank you. So I thought I would just take a minute to talk about our process a little bit, how we're being, you and us. The whole budgeting process, as you may know, for the new people, starts with strategic plans, three of which happened tonight, and I think they're varied over the next three meetings or so. And that's an opportunity for department heads to let us know what they see the next handful of years looking like, part of that being fiscal, obviously. Gives the Board of Selectmen and the Ways and Means an opportunity to see that, to ask clarifying questions or whatnot, and kind of set the stage of what the budget process may look like. We'll then move into budget, budget hearings as well as individual department meetings so that individual Ways and Means members can specifically ask questions of department heads outside of the meetings, in, in public meetings outside of a Board of Selectment meeting. And that gives an opportunity to kind of dig in and understand what's going on and, and answer any concerns that there may be. In the end, I hope that you have enough information to make an informed decision, decisions on, on our budget and warrant articles, and if you don't, then I certainly encourage you to continue to ask questions and make suggestions until you feel you're comfortable with that. Danielle, you are one of the more recent Ways and Means members, and if you had any thoughts to share, we welcome that.
I'll just add that when you meet with your department heads and selectmen, don't be shy in questioning your budget items. I, I think there are sometimes you don't know, you know, if you should say something, but that's what you're there for, to do, to represent the residents of Anheuser's. And even if you think of something afterwards, we are receptive, and the town administrator as well, to getting answers to you if there's something you think of after those meetings or anytime during the process.
All right. Thank you. Yes, Wendy?
You're right. I just had a, you know, your suggestion, um, I would like to request that you hold the discussion on the stop sign up to be for strategic plans, which she was on for hours this evening, tonight, making your idea, you were saying to us.
That's a great idea. Thank you for suggesting it. Dean, can you speak to that? You've, you forwarded to us the, the letter about the stop sign, and I'm assuming that that is the, we are the first stop on, on that process?
Correct. Your, the normal thing that the selectman does with requests regarding speeding signs, stop signs, any other thing, you generally send it to the Highway Safety Committee for their review so that they can bring a recommendation back, and I guess that makes sense in this case as well.
Does anybody care to speak to it? I know that you've already talked to us, and I'm not asking you to come up and speak, but if there was anything you wanted to say. Everybody on the board comfortable with forwarding this to the Highway Safety Committee for the review?
Could we just?
They're moved.
And, and could we just ask that they meet probably as quickly as possible, so that you can get together?
All right, I've, I've got a motion and a second. Any questions or comments in the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you, Wendy.
Trying to share my screen again. Okay, so I'm actually going to do two things tonight. I'm going to quickly go through present strategic plan fiscal year '23, which goes from July 22nd to June 23rd. You heard many of the departments already do theirs, but since I didn't have, a couple of reasons we didn't do them before, is one, as you can see, finance is part of what we do, and get finance on board with it. And also, we didn't really have any projects that started this year, so we didn't have any initiatives that we needed to speak to. And as you can see, I updated it, so you'll see as I go through this real quick what I updated. A vision statement has stayed the same since, I think before I got here, it was basically this. Make sure town government's fiscally sound, delivers services fairly and efficiently, communicates effectively, and is recognized as a model of local governance of the state of Manhattan. As you know, that's actually true because of our strategic planning initiatives. One of the mission statements is to provide superior service to our residents, businesses, and visitors, to fairly administrate, administer the ordinances and policies within our areas of responsibility, and to provide transparency in our operations. General town government operations, we do human resources, communications, website management, and public assistance in social service agencies. So our first goal, strategic goal for this year, was continuous improvement in service delivery, which includes providing staff training, which we've been trying to increase, oversee and encourage implementation of strategic plans townride, working on KPIs with the department heads, we've been spending time on that in our department meetings. Proper administration is the ARPA grant, which was, we had just found out about last year before this happened, and now we also want to properly administer the Fire Department PFAS project, so that's why that's why that was added. Second strategic goal had to do with improving communications and engagement. Work with the BOS to develop a townwide strategic plan, and you know, we just went through that process, and ensure that our social media policy is appropriate and up to date, which is one of the things we're going to discuss today. So we've been moving through those things. Strategic goal number three, attracting and retaining quality employees, safe and welcoming workplace culture, working on that, provide adequate training opportunities, and probably a, a big one is implement updated personnel policies, and actually I think you're going to see that. We did decide at some point, excuse me, originally I thought that we'd be able to do it in one swoop, as it were, but we're actually going through it piece by piece because it's, it hasn't been updated since 2004, so we need to update it just not only so it's consistent with itself, but so that it's consistent with state and federal law. Regarding finance, these are their general responsibilities, cash flow management, accounts payable, payroll, you can read, so I don't need to read all those, but that's what finance Finance strategic goal number one is accuracy, efficiency, and transparency. They work with, the finance department works with boards, committees, department heads, employees, and the public to provide timely and accurate financial statements, achieve audits with no material deficiencies, develop outward-facing report on the financial software to increase transparency, and actually I think the finance director here is going to speak to that a little bit later, and then continual internal training on software to increase use, usage and improve usefulness. Strategic goal number two for this year in finance, the sustainable financial system. I know that the finance director's been working on developing clear financial policies, and I know that she's also, I believe she's going to talk about financial software as well. During this fiscal year, it's expected we'd be able to, and that's the current fiscal year, update the Personnel Policy Handbook. As I said, we're doing that step by step. Develop a social media policy, which the board is working on now, that's up tonight as well. Determine the use of ARPA grant funds and set up as many related programs, and manage the Fire Department PFAS project. The finance department has had regular staff turnover for at least 10 years. I'm hoping that we can set up the right policies, procedures, and technology will help fix the issue once and for all. So that's basically the current situation. And now, answering any questions, but then I want to go to the upcoming, the one that actually has to do with the budget and the initiatives that we want to do next year.
Does anybody have any questions?
So we'll keep moving. Once again, this is for fiscal year '24, which is July 2023 to June 2024. So it has to do with the budget that we're working on. And people need to think about that, how far out we work on budgets. I mean, you know, you never know, look at the price of gas, look at inflation, and look at things that are going on. Anyway, we do the best we can. Over the last few years, administration and finance has had significant turnovers in personnel. Our current plan, the one we just went over, was designed to help stabilize these departments and start the process of moving forward. Fiscal year '24 will have its own challenges, but we should be better prepared for them. I do think that we've shown tremendous resiliency during COVID, to be honest, but a vision statement is the same as it was before. I'll read it again. Mission statement has stayed the same. Our overview is the same, we're still doing the same things. A couple of new things that the selectmen asked all the departments to put into their strategic plan for this coming year, they asked for basically a basic SWOT analysis, and, and this is obviously, you can do 10-page SWOT analysis, but I was really just looking for probably the, the highlights. I think our biggest strength has been, and like I just said during COVID, I think we proved it, financial and organizational resilience. It hasn't been easy to work through some of the issues because of some of the turnover and some of the stuff that's going on, but we did it, and we're still here, and no one is ever in jail, so that's a good thing. I think a weakness is, one of the things that we need to really start thinking about is position turnovers in the next two years. Just to be clear on that, both the, the finance director will be gone by the end of this fiscal year, and the town administrator will be gone by the end of the next fiscal year. So those are positions that are going to need to be filled, and then the other weakness is out of date and inconsistent policies, and hopefully we're working through that now. Opportunities, obviously, is some of the grants that are coming through. I mentioned ARPA and PFAS, but there's other highway grants and other money that might help make some of this stuff go well. One thing I actually wanted to mention, when we were talking about, and I don't want to forget, when we were talking about the franchise agreement, I just want to mention that Joe Cummings, who does the work back there, has done a tremendous job nursing along really outdated equipment, and he came up with him with the Zoom stuff, and he did the best he could with the stuff that he had back there. That doesn't specifically relate to this, but I think it does show that that's another thing, the opportunity for that funding, so the franchise agreement would help a lot back there. Expecting him to do a lot was very little at this point. And then the threats of recruitment and retention could impact stability, that's an absolute threat. One of the other things that was asked is to talk about single point of failure, greatest threat to systemic stability, or what, like somebody, somebody put it like what, what keeps you up at night, and I must admit that almost nothing keeps me up at night, but I think our greatest threat to systemic stability is a successful ransomware attack that would close down virtually all of our systems and cost the town a lot of money. And, and one of the things we've been trying to do is as much training as we could, because the, the weakness that allows a ransom, ransomware attack is, is human, human error, human failure. Somebody, somebody lets it in, somebody lets a virus in that causes that to happen. And so we do the best we can, we have a weekly training that we send out, thanks to our IT people, and so that really is the greatest threat that I worry about, because that would close down all of those systems at once, even though we do our best to have backups, and hopefully it wouldn't be as bad as it could be. The other thing that we were asked was to talk about employee retention and recruitment, and what we saw coming up with that, and I mentioned it earlier, fiscal year '23, current fiscal year, we're going to need a new finance director, and once again, something that's going to be talked about tonight is the addition of an assistant finance director. If we could get somebody, it would help that transition. Fiscal year '24, new town administrator will need to be onboard, and what I'm recommending, although since I'll be gone, and we'll have anything to do with it, but the addition of a new special projects coordinator, that was actually something that was mentioned in a study that was done as far back as 2015, that, that we needed one more person in administration, and that's what I would recommend, but I'm feeling like the new town administrator should pick his or her own person, so we'll push that off, and that won't be a thing this year. So once again, we're still continuous improvement of service delivery, appropriate assistance to each town department, you know, the, the, the town departments count on us, some of them more than others regarding human resources, working with grants, other projects that are coming up. As I said, we've been working on key performance indicators, an annual review of department operations by the BOS indicating satisfaction above for each area of administrative responsibility is how we're going to tell whether this is, we're on the right track. One of the things that we need to do in this upcoming year is, the deadline is December 24th of 20- is the deadline is December 24th of 2024. So the ARPA funds are going to need to be obligated next year by that time, 2024. And then one of the projects that the selectmen brought up is municipal records digitization. And I think that should be done during that timeline. I know that, you know, we have, and those things could be related at some point. I mean, ARPA funds, the digitization of records is a one-time thing, and that's sort of the type of things that ARPA funds would be good for. So I know we have some other possibilities with the ARPA funds, but if you get into 2024 and that money is still there, you might want to use it for that. Strategy number two is improving communications and engagement. Continue to work with the BOS on town-wide strategic plan implementation. Manage, monitor, and update as necessary the town's social media policy. I do think that, you know, what I think is probably going to happen with the media policy, the social media policy, is that if the selectmen approves what's in front of them tonight, I think we're going to sort of watch and work with the departments and see if we need to make tweaks to it so that it works for everybody. I think the key performance indicator on this is improvement in the Citizen Satisfaction Score with Communications on a biennial survey. And I think that part of the point is, is down under initiatives, we need to start doing a town-wide biennial survey, in my opinion. The Police Department does it every two years. Police Department does it, and it gives them very good feedback and information. And I think we need to do something like that for the townwide, for all the departments. So that's one of the initiatives I'd like to see moving forward. Attract and retain quality employees. In terms of initiatives, this is probably the biggest one. I think that the key performance indicator should be the rate of retention of full-time employees annually. And over the last few years, we've had considerable turnover, although, and that's going to move forward too, but some of that has to do with things outside of our control. Economy has gotten strained. But I, one of the things that I think it's really important in terms of recruiting and retention is getting the town into the New Hampshire retirement system. Right now, we're one of the few towns in the state that's not in the retirement system. And the impact that that has is that whenever we go out to hire, for instance, if we're looking for an Assistant Finance Director, if we move on that, what you would normally be looking for in an assistant position like that is somebody who's maybe been in a, in a city or a bigger town, that's worked there seven, 10 years, and has experience in finance, and is ready to move up, and that this would be a step up from them. From working in the Finance Department to working as an Assistant Finance Director or so, right? So that would be a step up for them. Well, somebody who has seven to 10 years in the New Hampshire retirement system is not going to drop out of it to come to Anheuser's. One thing we would need to, the premium, the money that we would need to pay them to make that worthwhile would be more, but just in general, if you're in the retirement system, you want to stay in the retirement system. And so us not being in there impacts every, every time we go out to hire somebody, it's, it's an issue. I mean, they don't all bring it up, but it's always an issue. So my initiative is, for this year, is going to be to suggest that we, that the town gets involved in that. And we're going to talk in a minute about the cost of these initiatives. Finance strategy number one, like I said, we do the Finance Department as well. Increased accuracy, efficiency, and transparency, that's pretty much the same. The key performance indicator on that, once again, is an indication on the town-wide biennial survey that the public is increasingly aware of information provided by the Finance Department. Obviously, you don't find where they're increasingly aware the first time, so this biennial survey needs to be an ongoing thing so that we can start to gather information. It's a long-term issue. Develop a sustainable financial system. Here, the initiative is continued funding of a new AFD position. Now, what I'm presuming there, which may or may not be true, is when the Finance Director asked today for the selectman to allow her to hire that position immediately. If they do that, that will have to be money that comes from somewhere else in the budget because there's no money in the budget for that. So they would need to find that money somewhere else. What this initiative is for the coming fiscal year is that when that is then put into the budget, however the selectmen choose to do that, that that is approved. So that's really, because obviously, if it doesn't get approved, then you end up without that position again next year. So that's the other initiative. And the costs of those two big initiatives, the other one, the one on the biennial survey is minimal dollars, so I didn't even put that in as a big initiative. But New Hampshire Retirement System is about $225,000 annually. That will depend on a number of things because people that are already here may not want to get in the retirement system. They don't have to. New hires do need to, under the state regulations, get into it. But it might not be quite that, but ultimately, as people turn over, that's about where we end up. Finance, the addition of the Assistant Finance Director, the cost is approximately $100,000, which is just a round number, which would include salary and benefits, obviously. So in fiscal year 25, which we're not talking about right now, but I just thought it would get us thinking about them. Special Projects Coordinator position, digitization of records, and then a compensation study, which is something that the selectmen were interested in seeing done. And then in fiscal year 26, looking at upgrading IT capabilities. I think we're going to stay with the present company for the next two years, but after that, you might want to do something different. So that's basically what I've got for the coming fiscal year and a little bit looking down the road, and I'm open to any questions.
So we'll check with board members, starting with John, and then after that, check with Ways and Means members for questions.
So I was expecting an Assistant Finance Director position, and $100,000 is not an unreasonable cost for it. I'm open to the idea of the New Hampshire State Retirement System, but I'm not sold on it. So I'm going to have to hear a little bit more about that down the road. It would definitely increase the overhead on the town. It might make it easier to hire people. They may offset, they may not. So I can be persuaded, but I haven't been yet. Other than that, I think if we're looking at turning over the Director of Finance and they bring in a new Assistant Director, that's probably not the best time to start also looking at replacing our financial system. So then we might need to limp along with that for another year or two. Other than that, I have no other comments on the presentation.
Thanks, Dean, great presentation. Just one thing that I noticed was not there is the software for finance? Or is that going to be in another presentation?
Well, she's going to talk about it tonight. I didn't put it in partly because, actually, partly because it looks like, the initiatives are sort of additional money, but it looks like some of the prices she's been looking at, the cost might actually go down from what we have now. So it won't be, at the very least, it wouldn't be significantly more annually. She might need something for one year, and I think she's going to talk about that tonight. But I don't know if that's.
Okay, all right, thanks.
So I am becoming more and more convinced that the retirement system is something we probably should do. I'm not totally sold either, John. I want to look at the numbers, but I am open to it, and I'm very concerned about our ability to attract and retain people if we don't do something like that. The Assistant Finance Director, I'm also favorably inclined to do. The Special Projects Coordinator, I'm less enamored of that idea, but it's two years from now, so we'll see what happens. You said the most seriously, if there was something that could keep you up at night, it would be a ransomware attack. Are we, are we ready for that? Are we protected against that? Is that something we need to look into more?
Well, I think we're as ready as we can be. I know that that's, I mean, we back up as much to the cloud as possible, but there are some things, you know, downstairs that isn't possible, ends up on our servers. Somebody assessing tax collecting things. And the way we've tried to be prepared is by doing training. Anytime you go out, I mean, I've been to a few courses on, you know, what to do about the problem with IT and attacks. And basically, everybody says the same thing, just training, training, training. Because the way they get in is, there's no way, there's no way to stop somebody from doing something dumb on our end.
So I got a town email, an email concerning town business the other day, where you had to click a link to indicate, you know, a survey of times you were available or something like that. And it just scared the daylights out of me because it was from somebody outside of the town. And there's a link, you can't really tell where you're going to go or what's going to happen when you click it. So I didn't respond, but I mean, that kind of stuff is still out there. And I don't, I don't even know whether the links were enabled in our email system or whether we have the capability to disable those links. But I, I still think that if somebody really wants to come at us, we are vulnerable.
And I would like to say two things. Number one, one way that we're getting people to not click on links is that our IT provider is specifically, at least once a week, sending out a fake email to catch people. So, and then who, who it catches goes right to Jennifer. So she can follow up with people. And I will tell you, I mean, I've gotten to the point like, you know, every now and then I get something from Citizens Bank that's legitimate. And I don't click on it. I call Finance or I call Liz and say, should I, is this real or isn't it? I mean, they've made it so much, they've slowed up the process because you've got to double check the process, but you absolutely have to do that. And that's what we're trying to get through to people.
Thank you, Dean. I'm just going to speak to that for a second. I am the furthest thing from an IT person, but I have asked that question time and time again of our, of MicroTime, and specifically Steve Wolsky. And I'm told every time that we have done everything that we can, that we have purchased every product, every best product that's available. But it might make sense for us to get a representative of MicroTime, Steve Wolsky, who lives in Amherst, to come in and present that to us. So that we, and that question has come up a number of times recently. And I think it might make sense to hear it firsthand.
And we have, I mean, everything, every time they suggest something, we just say, sure, do it. I mean, we don't, we do not let money get in the way of that. So, because that would be a disaster.
John?
I'm in agreement with what everybody else has said. Dean, you did mention that as far as retirement, did you say that's state mandated now or it's just a policy we want to adopt for new people?
No, it just, well, if we, if we go with the retirement first thing, the state requires any new people to come in. The existing people can choose. For instance, some people, if they're too close to retirement, that they wouldn't get enough, they might want to continue with the 437 that the town offers now, the gap retirement thing. But if anybody new comes in, the state requires you to get involved in the system. So it might not be as much to start with because we, you know, we have people that have been here a long time, and some of them are just not worth it to get in if they're going to retire in the next five years. But after that, whoever you're replacing, they have to be in the retirement system.
I know that we have interviewed people that have declined the offer from the town because of not having the retirement, so I think it's a great idea. Thank you.
Thank you for the presentation. It was spot on, very good, thank you. As far, and we'll talk more about the Finance Assistant Position, but I think this board has been very supportive so far of those efforts, and I think we'll continue to hear that. In, in terms of the retirement, I don't think any of us should yet be sold on it. We haven't, we haven't been given a presentation. But the fact that we have, we're open-minded to it, it's a good step forward, I think. It has come up time and time again in the past. And for fear of the cost, we've steered away from it. And I think at the very least, it deserves a very close look now so that we can make it an informed decision rather than just avoiding it. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, do you want to ask?
Yes, I'm sorry, Ways and Means, Lori, anyone? I couldn't see you.
I just wanted to get a question on the Assistant Director position.
I could go.
Yes, hi, I'm Lori Mix, Ways and Means. The question was around the Assistant Finance Director that would be hired this year. And then is the intention that that person would be, would move into the Finance Director position when the current position Finance Director stepped down?
I think that would be a best-case scenario.
Okay.
Yeah, I think there's no way to know until we start that process. But I suspect you'll, you'll hear that that would be our wishes.
Okay, and so that's, so that would be the wish list as opposed to then creating a second position?
Oh, I'm sorry, I misunderstood. No, I think we're, I think we will be talking about creating a new position.
Okay, so it would be a Finance Director, Assistant Finance Director, and then?
And a bookkeeper.
A bookkeeper, okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, all right, we will move on to tax and assessing. Hi, Gail.
Give me just a second to set this up.
Of course.
Well, good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to present the strategic plan for the Tax and Assessing Department. I'm going to spare you, as Dean did, going through some things that haven't changed here. First, our mission and vision statements remain the same, to deliver fair and equitable taxation to all property owners in Amherst with respect, integrity, and compassion. And our vision is to serve the taxpayers of Amherst demonstrating the highest ethical and professional standards and quality assessment services in response to the needs of the community. Our overview has not changed. One small change is the change in our assessing firm. Now, we have Granite Hill Municipal Services. They're in the first year of a five-year contract. Just a little bit of an overview, our town valuation breakdown. We had an increase in commercial property over last year of just under $6 million. Our residential property valuation spent up about $22 million. And our utilities went up about $3 million. valuations went up about $22 million. And our utilities went up about $3 million. And that is due to the residential and commercial, due to building permit applications, new construction. That helps us to offset our tax rate a little bit. And this, this is, this total valuation went up 28 million, and that's used to calculate the tax rate going forward. This was submitted to the Department of Revenue. And then, just to give you an overview of our, how our valuations have changed over the years, you'll see that in 2011, our values decreased. That was a revaluation year. And we have revalued property every five years. So then in 2016 was our next revaluation, where the values went up. And then our next revaluation was in 2021, and we saw our values jumped significantly. And this is just a history and status of our property tax liens, how many properties were leaned initially, and how many we have left now. So initially, we're, we have 15 property, I'm sorry, that is wrong, but we're currently at about 227,000 uncollected taxes. So when we did a couple, I did a couple comparisons that we'd been, been mentioned that would be interesting. First was the coefficient of dispersion, which is a COD. It's used in, it's derived from our sales ratio study that the Department of Revenue does each year. And they give you a coefficient of dispersion rating, which is the most common tool used to measure the uniformity of values within the community. Post-revaluation, our coefficient of dispersion was 9.5. Typically, we range from eight to 12. And the Department of Revenue has considered 20 or less to be in an acceptable range. So most recently, we just did a study, our, our new assessor did a study. And we, the sales are analyzed through the end of September, so we still have September to go. But right now, it looks like our COD is at a 12, which is on the high end of where we're used to being. So we're going to track that very closely and see how things go. The market, you know, being as crazy as it is, kind of drives that. So we'll keep an eye on that. Here are some comparisons, again with other, with other communities, where their COD ratings are in comparison to where ours was for 2021. And we're rating about, about fifth in that. And then we also looked at municipal staffing for the assessing department. And we're finding, we found that this was interesting to see that there are, you know, quite a few communities that are similar in size to ours, that do have on-staff certified New Hampshire assessors, as well as other staff members. So I think our staffing is on the lower side of things. And I, I think that in some ways, the town could benefit from having a certified New Hampshire assessor on staff at some point. So our SWAT analysis, our strengths are definitely customer service. We pride ourselves on offering great service to the community. Our online payment services are available, and assessment services. We have knowledgeable staff members. Our collections are good. Our, our banking services are exceptional. And our interdepartmental support and our accounts receivable software is, is, is serving us well also. And as far as weaknesses go, I'd say our office, office space area, we spoke about that, and storage of files. I, I also am noting that, as the Department Head for Tax and Assessing, I am an administrative Department Head solely. I have no part in placing values, and I have limitations on the, on the extent of my management. So I'm, and I'm thinking that the way our staff is right now, we're, we're doing fine. But long-term, we may want to look at hiring a professional that is trained for assessment work and a property appraisal. It's really an important function in, in our, in, in this department. And, and at some point, I imagine that within the next five years, our staffing is, is going to change. So we're going to need to probably look at that. Our opportunities are to expand public service, employee retention, as we, you know, go forward with changes in our department, review our space needs. We too are considering a survey as well, municipal survey. Maybe we could coordinate with other departments to get public input and, and see what desired changes might be out there for us. And then, as we watch the COD, and the market changes, maybe we can have an opportunity to lower that, that coefficient of dispersion with a self-correcting market. We'll have to see what happens there. So our threats, I would say, are just, you know, as our expense and cost to make changes, the real estate market trend pushing our COD. And in some cases, if, if our COD gets over 20%, or 20, a figure of 20, the state could order an, an earlier revaluation. And we would have to be, you know, ready to take on the cost of that. And then the other threat we're finding is assessing resources, people and firms that, that do this type of work. And I'd almost say that that's probably our, our point of failure, if we want to look at that, because it's very important that we have accurate assessments in order to tax the public appropriately. So they're, they seem to be coming, finding hard to come by. So our short-term goals are, we'd like to bring in electronic billing. And our software people are working on that. They're fine-tuning their, their software to provide us with a good service for that. So I expect that to come along soon. We can do, we'd like to do the space needs review, the surveys, to get some feedback. And we'll continue to monitor our COD rating. We also, I'd like to monitor our assistance to the elderly a little bit more frequently. We've been doing it about every five years with revaluations. And with the cost of living changes in, in Social Security, I think we can try to adjust our, or at least review our income levels, and just to be sure that we're, we're serving the public with what, with their needs, with our elderly and our disabled population. So and the longer-term goals would be the potential restructuring of assessing and tax, kind of dividing the two, and, and have a different management style, and consider the possibility of hiring a certified New Hampshire assessor. And our initiatives, the electronic billing is, is going to be a minor cost. I don't expect a large impact from any of the others. Long-term out, I just threw a number out there for, we are currently paying our, our contracted assessor, it'll be a little over $100,000 a year by the time they get to the end of the contract. So I figured part of that would go towards the, the staffing of, of, of staffing change if it was needed. And then another $100,000 to, to cover added expenses. Because many of the assessors, even though they're on staff, they still need the, the contract, they do contract out some of the, the cyclical inspections and some of the building permit inspections. And then the town-wide revaluation, it's scheduled for tax year 2026, which spans over the two, the two years, fiscal year '26 and '27. And I just estimated that at $150,000. That is funded through the Capital Reserve Fund and a warrant article of $25,000 for each year. We currently have, I forget what the number was. I think we currently have about $50,000 in the Capital Reserve now. So as we continue with our $25,000, we should be in good shape for that. And that is all I have for this evening, except that all of this bills back, goes back to our mission and vision statement to try and, and meet the needs of our community.
Thank you, Gail. Danielle?
Hi, Gail. Just a few questions. I know we have that new assessor, and this is probably a good opportunity for, for us to learn how, what your thoughts on, on them. We've had some, some abatements recently, and I was pretty impressed with their work. So, just with what they're doing, what was your opinion right now?
Yeah, well, I, I'm pleased so far. We've, we've, we've had more, more interaction, I think, with the public in just these few weeks than we had prior with, so, and we did a little informal survey with each of them. And all of the scores came back very good, very high scoring. So they felt like they'd been listened to. Not all of them liked the exact answer that they got, but they understood and, and felt that they had a professional response.
And the, the current properties that are, have liens on them, that's not, there was, there was a lot of years that just had one. It's not necessarily the same house?
Yeah, actually, it, there's, the two oldest ones are a property that was in bankruptcy, which, which, which held us from doing any, taking any further action. And then that same property then deferred property for several years, and now it's in a probate situation. So we're waiting for that to come out of probate. And the other, the other single property is a, a, a piece of land at the, at the lake. It's teeny tiny. And there's been some questions about the ownership and exactly, you know, who should be paying the taxes on it. And, and the people who are taxing are saying they don't own it, but we've had title searches done. And it's just kind of complicated, and it, it needs to, it needs to have some attention.
Okay. And I, I think you, you, I think you've answered this for me, but let me just go back through the, your idea for hiring an assessor. It kind of is, the, the cost for compensation for that position would kind of be what we're paying an assessor now, but no?
No, I, I mean...
I'm just wondering what the salary of a certified assessor, I guess, would be?
So I guess I don't really have that available. But, but between salary and benefits, you know, your benefit package and looking at the whole thing, I mean, I, I would, I would guess closer to 150.
Okay. And I think I just had one more, if I can find it. Name it. Okay, thanks.
Bill?
Thanks, Mr. Chairman. Thanks, Gail. So let me start with coefficient of dispersion, okay? Very simple-minded. We have a reeval, revaluation. Properties are 100,000. And then a year later, we look at sales of properties that sold, is 110,000. COD roughly 10. Is that kind of a fair way to look at it?
So, so in essence, first, you look at a ratio. So you have your, your market value and your assessed value.
Yeah.
And they analyze the sales from the, from the previous year.
Yeah.
And they come up with a ratio. And then they take that ratio. Our ratio for last year was 94.7, which means that on average, our assessments were about 5% below market after our post-revaluation. Okay. Then they take those one step further, and they compare them basically to one another. So that you see if there's more significant changes in the residential area, or the commercial area, or land, vacant land. And then they come up with the coefficient of dispersion. So they're looking for equity throughout the town, and, and that's how they measure it. I'm not sure I can give you much more detail than that.
Okay. So it's not simply, how much have the property values increased? There's a...
That's the ratio.
An evaluation, a metric that says, how good are we at one property?
Right, exactly.
...the other. Okay, all right. We don't mark to market. In other words, if a property is sold, we don't increase the assessment. Does any, is, any place in the state do that?
No.
That's not allowed. So we do it only at time of revaluation, or with building...
Or if there's new construction. I mean, or if there's a situation where, you know, it is, it is inequitable. But we don't typically see that until revaluation, and then the whole town is done at once.
All right. Shifting now to electronic billing, that would be something that residents would opt into if they wanted it? Is that...
Yes, yeah, they would share their email address with us, and just like they do for automobile registration. And, and we would do that. We would also, at this point, it doesn't take the place of, of paper billing, which is a little disappointing. We would have to do both. So it would be...
Were required to do the paper bills?
Yes. So it would be an added service.
Okay, all right. And you mentioned space, and I have heard from others, particularly in this building, that space is a concern. And it seems to me, Mr. Chairman, that's not something that any individual department can deal with. I wonder whether that's something we ought to ask Dean to put on his plate for administration. In other words, you know, what are the space needs of the employees in town, and do we need to do something about it? That's all I have. Thank you, Gail.
Okay, thank you.
John?
Gail, very good presentation. I know that as far as tax revenue was usually at 94 to 96% or so. So this is kind of a slow time of the year, as far as income tax. I, I don't have any other questions, but thank you for doing a good job.
Thank you.
John?
Thanks. Good presentation. I don't have a whole lot to say. I just have a couple of questions. This is not solely your problem. You're the first one to bring a recurring warrant article to us, so I'm going to ask you. It has been $25,000 a year, every year, for many years.
It has.
When inflation's bumping along at 1% to 2% a year, that's fine. 1% of $25,000 is $250. You can absorb that. However, when you're running at 8% to 10%, 10% inflation on $25,000 is $2,500. So at some point, we're going to need to raise that amount in order to have enough to carry on a revaluation. If, we may or may not be there yet, but when you come back around with your budget, if you would take a look at that?
I would.
And recommend either we just start doing it now, or two years from now, we start bumping it up, or something. But let's not pretend that inflation isn't affecting everything, including the recurring warrant articles. So just take a look at your numbers, and I'll say similar things to other people when they come in, like the fire chief. And we'll see what we can do to try and at least stay level with inflation on our capital reserves. The other question I had, you were very delicate when you alluded to the fact that neither you nor Michelle is going to be around in your positions forever. Dean was much, Dean was much less delicate when he gave his presentation. Basically, the Finance Director's gone this year, and he's gone next year. Got it. Two people, got to have that. So I, I understand that neither one of you desires to be at your desk for the rest of your life and beyond. But it would be nice if you could give Dean some kind of an indication of, of range, maybe, of how long you think you might be here, and how long, you're not going to be here past that, no matter what, so that we can start planning for replacing both of you.
Okay. When I know that, I'll let you know.
It will be challenging to do that, but one of the many things this board does, without getting any particular credit for it, we get, we get chewed out when we do a bad job of doing it, and that's hiring new department heads. When we hire a good department head, everybody loves the department head. Nobody thinks about how we went through the process to find that department head. If the department head's less successful, it's our fault. But whatever. We just need to know with enough lead time to try and figure out when we think we're going to need to be looking for very qualified people to do these jobs.
I understand.
So we would appreciate whatever kind of heads up you could give us.
Okay.
That's it for me.
Thank you. So I don't know if it's a good thing or a bad thing. Going last, all the questions have been asked, but a couple of clarifications. The COD rating, am I right that, that's not a measurement of how good we're doing? That's a, that, we have no control over that?
It's very reactive to, to the market.
The only thing we could do is, is a revaluation sooner than the five-year requirement.
Right. We'll just monitor it. At this point, it is very reactive to the market. We have no control over that. So, so we'll just monitor it, and if we have to take action at some point, we will.
And I wanted to talk just for a minute about your idea on, on revisiting the elderly and, and disabled deductions more often than maybe the every five years or so.
And not so much the amount of them, but the income levels.
Okay.
We're at 67,000 right now. And, you know, each year, be it be small, be it be large, there's an increase in, in, in Social Security levels.
So you answered my question. That makes a lot of sense to me.
And maybe we could at least monitor those and...
Because I, I was trying to figure out a way to tie the, the actual deduction without a new revaluation to something, and you can't. But I think that's a nice idea.
We would still have to have a warrant article to change, even if we just changed the income level. But, but we don't have to wait for a revaluation.
Okay. Good. Because, I mean, we know, and other people find out the hard way, that we do a revale one year, and, and we can't do anything about the deduction a month and and we can't do anything about the deduction amounts until a year later. And so there's a, there's a gap year in there, which is very unfortunate.
That's true, and that's true statewide where it's not just a.
Gail, thank you.
It's challenging.
Very good presentation.
Thank you.
Ways and Means, Laurie, please. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next and last is the police department chief. How are you?
Good evening. Okay. Good evening. I'll get right into it. Start with our our mission and our vision statement. Without going into a a long message on it. We've worked on repurposing our mission statement over the last couple of years. We've arrived on this, that the thinking has been traditionally, we've always been focused on the enforcement angle, the enforcement and protect and serve, the things that people know that police departments do. But we we met and we really talked about it. What's the, what's the basic, primary thing that we're we're all about? And that is to protect the lawful rights, freedoms and safety of the entire community and engage that with the compassion and fairness and respect that we we take very seriously. Going forward over the next five years, our vision statement is focused on further enhancing accountability and transparency and the overall effectiveness of our our police services. Our agency goals have remained and continue to remain the same over the last several cycles. They're basic tenants that we've identified as being important and a good measure of of how we're doing our job. Producing neighborhood property crime, traffic safety enforcement along our town roads, impacting the availability of illicit drugs and, you know, overall maintain the professional standards that we expect of ourselves and that the community expects. Our SWAT analysis, it had been some time since we did it. I'm happy to say that the previous weaknesses that were identified back several years ago in the first iteration of our plan are no longer. So just a word to the process that this this strategic training process that we've started does work and it has has measured effects. Our strengths, we continue to be able to screen and hire qualified candidates. That's one of our, that's really where it starts. I won't go into describing each of the others. I will get to our weaknesses, which as the board was asking for sort of a that single point of failure analysis, where do we stand? Our our biggest issue that we have, and I'll go into it later, is the district court prosecutor succession. Our opportunities summed up in our vision statement over the next five years, enhancing that transparency and accountability. And of course, you know, budgetary and technology curve issues are always a potential threat. So as Dean had mentioned, we started doing a survey biennial, biennially, biennially back in two thousand thirteen. So we're in a mid-cycle right now. We're actually going to be looking at, looking for the same data that we have in previous surveys. We'll be up to do this again in two thousand twenty three. But we're working on some other enhancements that I won't go into now, but looking to develop some additional information and build on what we've already started. Our focus, as I said, our our goals have been in part dictated by the feedback that we got from the community. Property crime and 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 speed, two biggest issues that the town has, the response have always focused on. Very happy over the last four to five years, made a concerted effort in our patrol patterns and our approach to the to the job and we've had a steady decrease in the residential property crime that's been a focus. I will say, with the exception of a slight uptick during a election cycle, which was really attributed to just destruction of political science by people that didn't agree with the sign. But overall, we've had a very steady decrease in the residential property crime. Again, traffic safety, as we focused on before. Annual motor vehicle stops, we stop, just as a background, the average of roughly ten thousand vehicles per year in town. It's quite a bit, but as I mentioned back several months ago, we brought some focus to citations versus warnings. What are we actually doing out there? Not everybody's getting a ticket. The the issue is to address and encourage safe driving behavior, period. So that's just some background for community knowledge. As I've said before, we continue to be required to make a steady presence on our state roads, namely Route one oh one and Route one oh one A. But we've had a focus over the last several years of trying to transfer some portion of that dedication onto more onto focusing onto our town roads. It was tough to do during COVID. We had a lapse in a lot of things across the country. We were affected by that. But I can say we're very happy that the last year we were able to reach the goal that we were looking for, which was basically reversing what was a two thousand fourteen number and coming up with fifty nine percent of our focus on actual town roads with forty one percent being on state roads. I don't know that it's going to get much better than that, but we want to keep this dynamic in check here for the next year and see if there is any movement that we can do beyond that. And people realize that and appreciate the fact that we need to be on the state roads, but they want us in the neighborhoods and that's where we want to be as much as we can. I won't go through this entire slide other than to say that the reduction in availability of illicit drugs remains a focus for the agency. There's been a lot of transition over the last couple of years. Our our primary initiative that we came forward with several years ago was establishing through chiefs of police in Hillsborough County, a dedicated undercover drug task force. We participated in that, but it really only got resumed this year due to COVID and some other funding problems. So it remains a focus and I'm interested in reporting more on that back next year. Historically, I did include a slide that shows the drug activity, the arrests that we've been making in town over the years. And call it a trend or otherwise, we do have, we have realized a reduction in the encounters that we have with serious drug offenses over the last several years, so that's a positive. Goal four encompasses a lot of our future initiatives and what we're all about. And that is basically just maintaining that professional standard that we've always aspired towards. As I said, our next community survey will be in two thousand twenty three and we'll have some additional results from that. But we've maintained a very good level of service in terms of the respondents over the last several years. Part of that, as you know, that professional image and providing of services was tied toward our infrastructure development. The police station, first stage of the renovation, last renovation that had been done prior to two thousand twenty one was back in nineteen ninety six. This has been an ongoing project for anybody that's been part of these meetings over the last six years. Happy to say that the first phase was completed last year and we are currently set to finish the second phase next month. We're just waiting on some COVID influenced supply chain materials to come in and they plan on wrapping up at the end of October. And we anticipate that this will meet the needs of the town for the next thirty years and possibly beyond. Alongside those infrastructure improvements, we began talking about the implementation of a body worn camera project. We made an initial proposal at this hearing last year. A lot's changed since then, the, or a lot has developed since then. The funding that was grant funding available from the state has come to fruition. We have applied for and received a maximum grant allowance of fifty thousand dollars toward that project. We are set with very current costs at the moment. The upshot is that to get the program rolling, that will cost the town roughly fourteen thousand dollars in the first year and twenty four thousand dollars each year thereafter. That is, it's a, it's a standard cost of of doing business that we've now, we're going to be incurring. And that can be renewed on a, an annual basis or a a five year contract basis following. And most of the vendors are very similar, although we have settled on the one and that's a conversation for another time. Building on the comments that I made about our vision statement. Part of that, maintaining that effective delivery of services has to go to that one, I won't say a point of failure, but it's something to look at and it is a potential weakness. I think a lot of people would be surprised to hear that in the state of New Hampshire, the police department can assign an officer and generally does to handle prosecutions in district court. Anything from violations up through misdemeanors that would entail at the most a a prison sentence of or house of correction sentence of up to a year. We've always been very fortunate to have personnel that were well suited for the position. We've also been fortunate over the years to have a local court that really engaged and the amount of time that officers spent in that system, they were able to develop. But the court procedures have changed over the last five to ten years and the officers are not getting, I'd say nearly five percent of the experience that they used to. In addition to that, there's been a shift statewide away from using a police prosecutor toward having either a full time position or a part time position of an actual bar certified attorney. In fact, eighty percent of the departments in Hillsborough County and those that are our rough comparable agencies across the state currently utilize a attorney prosecutor. Excuse me, so on the left, we've got roughly thirty two of those towns that currently use that model. We're one of only eight that does not. And I would argue that of those eight, there are only two agencies that are relatively comparable to us. That would be Exeter and Guilford in terms of number of officers, population responsibilities. So it's, it's in stark contrast. The good news is we are going toward our issue, the discussion we had here regarding employee retention and recruitment. We're good for the time being. We've got a very qualified officer that handles that position. He has twenty one years on right now. And when you start to get to that point, not quite sure where people are going to go and what things are going to change. And we are not well positioned to provide the same level of service in the event of the departure of that person. So that's something we want to look at, if not this year, definitely in the coming year. That position, just as some background, twenty five to thirty hours a week. They would be a contract employee. I guess discussion, discussion could be held in terms of what level of benefits if we treated that person actually as a part time employee for the town or kept them as a contract. But we also want to mention that with the loss of those responsibilities or portions of the responsibilities in the support division captain, who currently is the prosecutor, we would be picking up additional responsibilities for that position in terms of the body worn system camera management, which is a, is a big undertaking on a, on a startup basis and a and a maintenance basis. Secondly, and I'll go into more about this, Kalia certification is something that we're looking to pursue by two thousand twenty six or at least as part of our five year plan coming forward. Kalia is, just in short, basically the professional organization that departments are recognized through. Without that, it's it's sort of like any other professional organization, whether it's in psychiatry or any other endeavor. Kalia is something that we want to strive toward. It actually, it shows that it's the best evidence of the overall professionalism of the agency from a accreditation standpoint, from a policy management standpoint, and from an accountability standpoint, which, as I mentioned, is a large focus of our vision in the next five years is to increase that accountability and that transparency. Just as a quick backdrop, these, this is a list of the current Kalia certified towns in the state of New Hampshire. Those that are in process. Two of our standard comparable agencies and ones that we board are Bedford and Hollis. Hollis is certified, Bedford's in the process. And we're certainly on par with the professionalism of both of those agencies and want to pursue that as well. It's it's a, it's a small portion of the state, but it's a very important portion and it is actually something that we're going to be seeing grow over the coming years. The governor's recent council on increased accountability in law enforcement designated this as one of their top priorities for departments across the state. We'd like to pursue that. Quick shot of our vision dashboard with some of the numbers associated with those initiatives that we've been undertaking. Part of the police department and our first responder infrastructure is the communication center. It's a fairly straightforward, five full time person operation augmented by part time employees. We provide twenty four hour, seven day a week coverage for the town. Our focus from the outset is to always maintain that caller satisfaction rating. They're the first point of contact. Our surveys have shown that they've done an excellent job at maintaining that professionalism and that remains a focus evaluated through our ongoing survey process. Second to that, and not necessarily less important, is to maintain that infrastructure. As with anything, communication is the foundation of everything that that we do. As I mentioned, we want to maintain that caller satisfaction rating of greater than ninety percent. We've been very happy to be able to do that for the last six years. Just a quick shot at the numbers of calls and log entries that our dispatchers make. It's a, it's a considerable number. Fifty seven thousand was was where we were at for two thousand twenty one. A lot goes on in there with a very small operation and folks do an excellent job. In maintaining that infrastructure, we've developed and had in place a capital reserve fund, which we're asking to maintain at level funding at twenty five thousand dollars. Our estimates for our major projects that are coming up are current. But as John pointed out, we do want to make sure that we're keeping track of any inflation aspects that go along with that. There have certainly been inflations in the in the tech world as ever with anything else. So currently we are on track to complete our two biggest projects in two thousand twenty five and twenty six. We do have an intervening project that I don't have sufficient details for at this moment that may work its way into that. But as we've represented in our our chart, we are funded appropriately for those anticipated costs through F Y twenty six. And that is all I have for information this evening.
Thank you, Bill. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Chief. I hear what you're saying about the prosecutor. I don't quarrel with any of your justifications for it. I'm not sure this is the year, but but it's got to happen sooner or later. So and I applaud going for the Kalia certification. I think that's a great idea. Do you see any need to change the staffing of uniformed officers over the next several years?
I I think we're pretty well positioned right now. We've been very fortunate and going to the comments that the board asks about employee retention and recruitment. Knock on wood, we've been, it it's a tough market out there and we've experienced our share, but we've always been able to come through a little more more quickly than surrounding communities, maybe just by luck. But I think it's a little more than that. I like to hope it is or think it is. So the the short answer is no, I think we're appropriately staffed for the time being, the next five years, I would imagine.
Okay. The one thing, this is not something you covered, but the one thing that I worry about is our. And if I say, when I say our, not just police, but the town's ability to respond to a very serious criminal incident, you know, like a Sandy Hook or Uvalde or something like that. And I don't want you to go into any details, but but I do want to ask the question, you know, have we sufficiently prepared? Is there more that in your mind we should be doing so that our folks are as ready as they can be if we get that terrible call?
I will say, and you're new to the board, but the, we've commented on the level of our training that we afford our officers over the last several years. The state has increased, is in the process of increasing their minimum standard of training for in service officers, which I always felt was very low. But we've always maintained a strong focus on training. It's an ongoing process and we are very well positioned, in my opinion, to respond to a major incident.
I know you do coordination work with the schools and training. I think last year you, maybe it was earlier this year, you did some training on a. I think last year, or maybe it was earlier this year, you did some training on a school-related incident.
Right, we actually have some more that'll be coming up in the next couple of weeks. But yeah.
Well, I would just say as one member, if you ever see any need there that you think we could help you meet, I would certainly like to hear it, and sooner rather than later.
Appreciate it.
Thank you, Chief. Tom?
Chief, I know this year we had a difference in vehicles, different manufacturer. How is that working out? Because I know a lot of stuff had to be retrofitted to the new vehicle as far as a cage and lights and things like that. How's that worked out?
It's going along. It's taking two or three times as long as it usually does because we just, suppliers can't get the equipment that we need. Prisoner cages, prisoner seats, the things that we need to safely maintain our officers and the public in doing their job. So it's going along, it's just it's very slow. We have new cars that are sitting there that I can't just get on the road quite yet, but we're moving along on it.
Okay. Chief, the new, I think it's nationwide standard now, Kalia. You said basically two years timeframe to get, so what is it done by officer, a certain amount of time to do that?
Right, we had, and Peter would recall, we had, tinkered's the wrong word, but we had looked into it years ago, and it's a, it's a big commitment, and it's a big time commitment. You need to really have a person that is able to, it's not their sole job, but it's a big chunk of their job responsibility to get that up and running and then maintain it. And that's why in conjunction with moving toward the police prosecutor, that would allow us to free up the man-arms that we need to be able to do that. And as you said, yes, it takes up to 26 months, and depending on how the prosecutor position moves along and any other changes that happen, that, I mean, we're flexible, but we want to, we want to look at that in our next five-year window as well.
So this puts us on with our national standards, is that correct?
Correct. It's, and like I said, going toward our commitment to the accountability transparency, it builds on standardized policies and procedures that you're accountable for. You need to be accountable to the community for it. They participate in the review of those policies and procedures, so it's the next step for us.
Good. Carry on, the good work. Thank you.
John?
Thanks. Good presentation, Chief. Thank you. Just add a couple of comments. I am receptive to the idea of having a bar-certified prosecutor, an attorney, doing the prosecuting. I've had reservations about the model we've been following since I became a selectman, but I agree with Bill, this may not be the best year to do that. I think we may be adding some other positions that we need a lot more desperately than we need that one. But by all means, keep talking about it and keep it in front of us. Also, there is enough going on where departments are moving to that model that you should be able to get some pretty good ideas on what it costs to actually do that, how it works out, et cetera. Same thing with the Kalia stuff. It's being either implemented or has been implemented in enough neighboring departments that you can find out who did it intelligently, who did it dumbly, and then you put together a plan to do it intelligently. So I'd be interested in understanding what the additional FTE requirements would be to get, A, to get it in, and B, to maintain it. I understand you probably aren't there yet, but at some point, we should be able to narrow it down to a pretty good range of, yeah, here's what it's going to take to make this happen, and here's what it'll take to keep it going. So when you get back, you come right back around again with your budget. If you got that number, great. If not, then next year we'll be asking for it again.
Sure.
And I think that's it.
Thanks, Chief. Great presentation, as always. Very detailed. I'm in agreement with the attorney prosecutor as well. I think that's something that we will be looking at, and again, probably not this year, but definitely on the horizon. And I just had a budget or a CRF question for you. Are there any changes in your CRF request from last year?
No. Same request. We'll stick with the $25,000 figure for this year, but I would not be surprised if we, depending on the development of the other project for the repeater system that may intervene, we may look at a slightly higher request in the following year, but we're okay for right now.
Again, as John mentioned, the inflation. See, you forgot to ask it, so.
Yes, I did.
You heard all that, so I won't repeat it. Okay, thanks.
Boy, that prosecutor position is near and dear to my heart.
I know.
My younger heart. But I appreciate where you're coming from and the changes that have necessitated it, and I understand. I also am in agreement with the Kalia accreditation. I think it would do our department very well. Not to say that you are not to very professional standards already, but I think there's a lot of weight to be carried with that. That's very good. I want to say thank you for bringing the prosecutor position up now and not in the year that you have to have it. We'll put it in there when it fits and when you have to have it, so, if not sooner. Thank you to the men and women that work in your building.
Appreciate it.
Thank you very much. Weesamies.
When that police station is finally done, we want a tour.
We'll get you a tour.
That's it for strategic plans. We've got a lot of other business still to do, but you're welcome to do as you wish.
I'm busy.
Okay. Thank you. All right, we're on to administration, Dean.
We are. Yeah, I don't know if it's open or not. Either way, so under administrative updates, the first thing I want to talk about is Halloween. We'll start with the easy one. People are starting to ask when Halloween is. I know when Halloween is, but I think they want to know when the town is planning on doing it. My understanding is the town always does it on Halloween.
Yeah, October 31st, 6:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. Simple as that, unless somebody here thinks we should change it.
I think the recreation department has already posted doors on the green for October 31st as well.
Yeah, I'm sure that we would have heard from Craig if he thought we should do something different.
Okay. Could you vote on that for me, please?
Yeah.
Halloween is Halloween.
Well, sometimes do it differently, and in fact, the reason I like you to do that is I know that at one point, a bunch of people came in when I was up in, that's not, another town, and so they changed the date that they did it, and that lasted about a week, you know, because people said, well, Halloween is Halloween. So anyway, it would just be helpful to everybody if we have that vote.
I move we certify, plan, whatever, to have Halloween on Halloween. It's always been done in this town, and I believe the recreation department has posted its schedule for doors on the green, so that should go off as normal. And basically, all Halloween festivities should be held on Halloween.
With trick-or-treating between 6:00 p.m. and 8:00 p.m.?
Trick-or-treating in the village between 6:00 and 8:00 p.m., and then in the neighborhoods, people can do whatever they think's a good idea.
Second, questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor? Who would argue that?
Okay, so we have a lot of stuff here, as you may have noticed, and I want to, one thing that we need to talk about, we talked about before regarding Pennachuck and the P-FAS stuff, and the question that Pennachuck still has, they raised it once before, was whether the town wants to pay to allow homeowners to connect their existing well to two hose bibs and irrigation system, and the town pay for that. An impression that I got before is that we weren't interested in paying for that, but I guess I need to get something official because they're getting ready to send out a letter related to their construction, and they need to know what to tell people.
So the question that, you want some, you want a decision from us is whether or not we think the town should pay to hook up two hose bibs to an existing well?
Right. In other words, allow people who might want to, to bring the town water in and supply the town, or to supply the house, and then still use the well water to say water the lawn.
And it's clear if we voted to do that, what would happen? If we voted not to pay for that hookup, it would not keep a homeowner from doing that themselves, is that right?
Right. Pennachuck would still do it if the homeowners were in the business.
All right. Tom, your thoughts?
Best situation is to get the whole thing done at the same time, because, you know, if Pennachuck does the drinking water, that's all fine and perfect, but if someone comes in that does not know what they're doing, and they cross, contaminate the Pennachuck water to the whole system to your well, it's extremely important. I believe it should be done by Pennachuck and get it done once and for all. There's no question about it.
Thank you.
John?
I'm sympathetic to everything Tom said. However, the reason we're doing this is because there's contamination in the drinking water. We are rectifying that by providing Pennachuck water to these houses. I don't know that we are justified in spending taxpayer money going above and beyond that, hooking up a private well system to a lawn irrigation. I agree it should all be done by somebody knows what they're doing. It should be done at the same time, but I don't see why the town should pay for it.
So the request is to hook up the well? Just explain it for me a little bit better.
So the well, if we.
We're going to hook up the house?
Yeah, when the house gets hooked up to Pennachuck, the well gets disconnected from the house. The question is, does the town, will the town pay to connect that existing well to two exterior hose spigots? So that it could be used for any uses that we would use.
But they still have the use of the water. That, well, Pennachuck is connected.
Yes.
So, I mean, that, we don't know the cost for that.
Well, I don't have, I don't have a range. What they say is that it would be different depending on the house, because somehow it's going to be in the walls, and somehow we've got wide-open base space, and so people couldn't even estimate.
Yeah. So I guess my concern is, do we charge the taxpayers for that? If we're providing water for the house, that same water could be used for those purposes as the disconnected well would be. So I'm, I think it's probably a cost that I don't feel the taxpayer should bear, is where I'm leaning.
Okay.
I would say that at the time of the connection by Pennachuck to household water, additional cost is going to be less than $100 to do the rest of it by hooking in the well strictly to the irrigation pipe. There again, you have outdoor faucets, and the cost-effective person would want all their outdoor faucets connected to the well, because all the water you're using from Pennachuck, you've got to pay for that. So the less, you know, the most important naturally is drinking water, because, as I say, should be less than $100.
Thank you.
Bill? So if Sandboard had, or whomever, state says it's okay to use the well water, even contaminated for irrigation and for those other things, I don't object to a homeowner hooking it up to their irrigation system, along with John and Danielle. I don't think the town should pay for that. I think that should be an individual decision in expense of the homeowner.
Thank you. I hear what you're saying, Tom, but I don't want to pay. And all of us, I think, have tried to do right by these homeowners through every step of this process, but I don't think that we should be spending taxpayer money to do this when we're doing that to hook them up to Pennachuck so that they get clean drinking water. And certainly, I mean, there are still two remaining options. You can use the Pennachuck water for outside sources uses, or you can pay, whether it's $100, whatever it is, I don't know, to do it yourself.
I would just give them one to each of the, you know, after the installation's done to Pennachuck, if you want to use your well, contact Pennachuck for approval. That should be strongly worded, because somebody could, you know, do the wrong connection, mess up the whole Pennachuck water system.
One fact, I'm guessing you'd want to get DigSafe involved.
A DigSafe has to be involved in the beginning anyway, but this would be an internal connection if you want to hook up your irrigation line.
So should that be an action item for Dean to put into a letter to all these people when it comes time to hook up the Pennachuck?
I would say.
If you want to get this done.
Well, actually, Pennachuck is going to send out a letter, and why they want to know that, and then the next question, they're going to send out a letter to them because they're planning their construction, and they need to know who's going to be doing it, so.
So do you need a vote from us?
That would probably be good.
Okay. Go ahead, Tracy, if you want.
Tracy Hamlin, Atchur Drive. Part of this, as much, I really appreciate the town's response to this, and I don't want you to think that I do not. Part of us moving into this house that we moved into, into this town, we knew, we had a well, we knew we had septic, we knew we had all these issues. We have not planned on paying for our water bill, and I guarantee that the water bill over the next few years is going to be way more than a hookup of my well to my irrigation system. So we want to maintain a beautiful town. It's not up to me to have to pay this extra $200 to keep my lawn green or to keep my garden watered, which I'm going to now have to pay for water for showers and food. I've now lost everything I've canned for the last five years because DES told me we can't eat it. So as much as I love the idea of the town water, and I really am grateful we have this opportunity, the extra $200 to hook it up so that we can water whatever we need to water in our yards, whether it's flowers, trees, fruit, whatever the case may be, it to me is minute versus the water bill that we're not going to face paying. I just wanted to.
Anyone else? Yes. Any other thoughts from the board? Does anybody, can I make a motion?
How to frame this? Mr. Chairman, I move that the town agreed to pay for Pennachuck hookup of water to the affected houses, but that connection of existing well to any other supply be a homeowner expense.
Second, questions or comments on the motion? All those in favor of the motion?
Aye, aye.
Thank you.
So the next issue is somewhat related, and that has to do with decommissioning of existing wells. I'll just read what he sent from Pennachuck. "In July, we indicated that Pennachuck does not get involved with the well decommissioning work. If the town does decide to pay for well decommissioning, Pennachuck could list that as an option on the well election form and would relay to the town which homes want to have their wells decommissioned." Does the town want to give the homeowner this option? So it's, there's no requirement that wells are decommissioned. Some people might want to keep their well open because they want to use it, and the question is, if they want it decommissioned, is the town going to pay for that?
Okay. John?
What are the consequences of not decommissioning a well once you're hooked up to Pennachuck?
What's that?
What are the consequences of not decommissioning your former well after you've been hooked up to Pennachuck?
I don't know that there's any consequences. I mean, you're required to make sure it's capped, so nobody steps in it, but besides that, I mean, for instance, some people might not want, because decommissioning it means you can never use it again. It's a non. It's another filling it with material that doesn't allow it to be happening, and they say that it's, I've heard different numbers, but I think the last thing he sent me, it was like, I don't know, eight to ten thousand dollars. One point I heard twenty, but the last I heard was eight to ten. And it's, you know, whatever.
Eight to ten dollars per foot?
Yeah, so a five hundred foot well, that's sort of five thousand dollars. It just depends. And, and then, but once they do that, they can never use it, so some people might wanna think about whether they wanna rehook it up to their, you know, outside things, or some needs to wash their car, I don't know. They might not wanna decommission it anyway, but, just depends on whether the town wants to pay for it or not. I mean, people can always do it anytime they want, it's not really part of what, it's not part of what Penetech's gonna do, so it's not gonna make a difference. They just need to, apparently when they're unhooking wells, they need to tell people what their options are.
I'm not inclined to ask the taxpayers to pay for that either.
Dean, these are questions that Penetech is asking?
Yes.
And how, when do they need to know that information?
Well, they, they actually asked last year, and we kind of said we'd get back to it, and now they're asking, because they need to, before construction starts, they need to send kind of, some kind of forms out to them. They call it the well election form, and they have to send that out to them and get, let people know what their options are before they start construction, is my understanding. That's why they need it now.
It sounds like a well can be recommissioned at any time, so...
Yeah, I'm certain it can't be reversed, but yes.
I agree with John, I would not have the town fund that.
And I agree, I mean, if there were a existing danger by leaving that well, then I would be all over it, but...
If there were a public safety benefit, I'd be willing to entertain the conversation. We just got finished saying that we're prepared to hook these things up, and a lot of people continue to access their wells for watering lawns and gardens and so on, so clearly it's not. So, I mean, if you have a choice between paying a hundred bucks to have your well set up to do that, or eight thousand dollars to have it decommissioned, I'm inclined to have the thing set up and just have it available, but that's me.
John?
I don't think it's the town that just wants a bounty, but, you know, the pipe comes in, you break into the pipe, here's the pipe going up to your house, and here's the pipe coming in from the well. Block off the pipe coming in from the well, and the new line goes right into the household water, that's it, it's destroyed. No additional cost to the taxpayer or anybody else, unless the taxpayer wants to use that well for irrigation purposes. And they, you know, have to pay if one of them can't even make that connection.
Okay, I agree. If, if there were a reason, if there were a safety hazard, then I think all of us would be upset. Okay. Anyone care to make a motion?
Building on Bill's previous motion, I'd move that while Penetech may offer the service of decommissioning the prior well, the town is not prepared to pay for that service.
I'll second that.
Questions or comments on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Aye.
The next, sort of, I just wanna update on where we are with the PFAS stuff, and we have a few other things coming up, but the, Penetech is in the middle of the environmental review that needs to be done before construction starts, and they are working with the state on that to coordinate that, so that is going well. We did start sending water to the people that the selectmen decided to send water to last time. The water actually got there before our letter did, so we had some questions, wondering why we were sending the water, but, so now we've gotten that straightened out, and got all the information from, contact information from the people, so that's moving along. And that's all I have on that, and then the discussion request that is in the, it's in the staff report, in the thing regarding, request from Fred Miller, that the board discuss covering the cost of blood testing for Amherst residents, and technology for cleanup of PFSAs and the groundwater table. And I guess I'll just say what I've said before, which is, when you're talking about those things, I think that getting ahead of our focus study is probably not necessarily the best idea. I think we need to wait and see what places we're, they're gonna say we're responsible for. And I will say, just so you know, and I guess the public will know, I did attempt, I went through the town's insurance carrier to attempt to get someone who, a lawyer, that might be able to start to give us some advice on this, because it seems like it's gonna be an issue and our insurance company doesn't cover it. And the one that they recommended, I called, and apparently he's good, and the response I got back from him, I emailed him actually, and the response I got back to him is that he couldn't, he couldn't help us because he would have a conflict of interest, which says to me that somebody contacted him from Amherst before we got there, so I don't really know what's going on with that. I haven't heard anything about any potential lawsuits or whatnot, but I did ask the insurance company for another possible attorney to get to, and I haven't heard back from them yet, so, you know, this is getting ever more complex, you know, just, you know, we don't even have a decision on the responsibility and what's, because we're not, we know, I mean, even if we assume that, that, you know, Thatcher and Cobbler are, just because the presumption is that things will flow downhill, I mean, we are looking at exceedances at Pettingale and exceedances on Manchester, and, you know, I think we need to sort of wait and see what the study comes up with. That's already my recommendation, but...
You had something? So I just wanted to make a comment, Mr. Chairman. The fact that this lawyer had a conflict, he may, it means he has another client whose interests are different from ours, but it's not necessarily a resident. Could be, for example, a manufacturer of one of the PFAS chemicals, and it would not be unusual, given the PFAS exposure, would not be unusual for a corporation to retain counsel early in the process. So, I, I wouldn't wanna read too much into the fact that the lawyer you spoke with couldn't talk to us because of a conflict.
The only thing I read into it is it won't work for us.
That is true. That is absolutely...
That was the bad news, because I heard he was good.
Dean, you, I think you had previously told us that the focus site investigation, which has begun by Sandborne Head, we expect that to be completed by year's end?
Well, actually, I got an update the other day, and they're, they're looking at January, so, yeah.
I'm gonna jump on the blood testing thing, and then with the feedback. My thought is, before we start making decisions on things like that, or even discussing them, that maybe we need a little bit of counsel from, from an attorney that you have yet to be, be able to identify.
From my point of view, there's not enough information here to make an intelligent decision. We don't know what, what is the protocol if there is PFAS found in the bloodstream? Is there a Talesean routine that can remove it? Is it gonna be circulating in that person forever with nothing can be done about it? Is it something you do once and done, or do you need to do this like once or twice or three times in a row to make sure you're, you're okay? I mean, there's just not enough information here to make a decision. Plus, we haven't heard from Sandborne Head, so I'd be inclined to put this on the back burner for now, and then, once we've got a little more information, we can have an intelligent conversation about it.
I'm not gonna go around the horn, but does anybody have other input? So you'll continue to pursue findings and counsel?
Okay, the next thing then on the list is final application approval. I wanna get that in tomorrow. Okay, I gave the one piece paper to the chair earlier. What I need is your approval to apply for the application, and then to, to allow me to fill out the forms on behalf of the town. One of the things that I've been, that I've tried to do is work with the state agency that approves these things. As you know, we did an eligibility request that had a project description in it, which talked about thirty private residences, blah, blah, blah. When I went to do the final, I tried to, I don't know, maybe, you know, beef that up a little bit, and get a little more, more details in there, and I sent it up to, I sent it up to the state agency that reviews them, which I've been doing right along this morning, and said, what do you think about this for a project description for the final? And she wrote back, I actually think your original project description was clear. Do you have any other questions? So I'm going back to the original project description, so, I tried. But, so I'd like to get that in tomorrow, but I need the motion that...
Yeah, so, Dean has got a form here that needs to be signed by him, and there's a, I'll try to come up with a suggestive motion out of it, authorizing the board to enter, to enter into a PFAS remediation loan fund grant agreement with the New Hampshire Department of Environmental Services to fund a water system improvement project, and further to authorize the town administrator, Dean Schankel, to execute any documents which may be necessary to effectuate this grant agreement.
Still moved.
Second. Questions or comments on that? Seeing none, all those in favor? Aye.
Thank you. That leaves us into the proposed social media policy. Who wants to run with that?
I'm gonna ask John to speak to that. Let me, if I could, I'll just interrupt for a second, give a little background. We've been, as we all know, we've been talking about trying to more effectively communicate with the community, and in particular, the possibility of social media, given what we think is some inaccurate information and some attacks on our volunteers and whatnot. And I had thought that possibly by drafting up a policy on the use of social media to communicate, might help us to understand what, whether or not we wanna do this, and what questions we might have, or what, what kind of policy we would want around that. And John volunteered to do that, so.
I volunteered to put together a draft. So, first of all, the department hasn't seen this, and had a couple of weeks to comment on it. Did they have any comments, Dean?
Actually, maybe Jennifer wants to get involved in this. I know she spoke to a few of them about it. I think that the, the main issue is that they weren't sure that they would have somebody to really do it on a department level, but Jennifer, can you get involved with this?
Yeah, my theory wasn't that every department must do this, it's just if a department chooses to do this, there's, you know, some basic ground rules on how to do it. And departments, I think, that are already doing it, somebody's already doing it, whether it's the department head, or an admin, or somebody.
Aye.
Hi. So, we did discuss it at a department head meeting, and one of the concerns the department heads had was responding to comment, because typically, the information that is put out on Facebook by departments is more informational, and they, they might put something on their, their own Facebook page, like letting you know what the update on Horace Greeley is, or I noticed that FIRE put out something about nine eleven yesterday, PD put something out about back to school. It's all very, very informational. I don't see any department heads participating in community forums, like Amherst NH, Amherst Community Group, Amherst Moms, that kind of thing. There may have been once upon a time, but have really drawn back from that. They try very hard not to, not to have any actual engagement, rather than just, if someone wants to find out more information, give us a call. So, there's, there was concern about that. And as far as, I think we talked a little, just a little bit about identifying who, I think that the social media policy asks for an identified member of the staff, and I think that that is already being done in departments. I would have to ask departments how likely they're doing it.
So the yellow highlighted paragraph, just so you know, this isn't exactly something that sprang from my head, you know, onto a blank piece of paper. I went out and shopped around and solidated a couple of different social media use policies into this document, and this was in one of them, and it, it looked very official, but I, I got to the end of this, and I couldn't decide whether it was adding more overhead than it was worth, or just, you know, but the department head managed that by him or herself. So the yellow highlighted thing, I'm amenable to deleting the whole thing. I'm also perfectly amenable to putting in a, a statement saying that as a general rule, we will not have comments on town sites. I agree that this should be primarily informational if you have questions called, but, you know, we need to have a forum to get information out, and what, for better or worse, people are looking on Facebook for all kinds of information. They are not coming to the town website.
They're not, although, some are.
Some are.
Some are. And I think that it can be challenging as to, you know, where to look for things, and that's something that you learn with experience. You know, sometimes I get in my office phone calls of people looking for things, and when I've walked them through, they're like, oh, that's where I find it. And, you know, the only, there is no, the town clerk doesn't really have her own Facebook page. She posts from her own personal website.
Right.
But she's an elected official, so, but other departments do actually have their own Facebook page.
Right, and they maintain it themselves, they post when they think it's a good idea, they don't take comments, and if people have questions, they will call. So I think that's a perfectly good model to start with, and I don't mind adding that sentence or two in here somewhere, I'm just not sure where to put it. But again, the main reason for the policy is to have a set of ground rules that everybody is prepared to deal with, and, you know, no comments is certainly one. And I also think that having a town page, or a board of selectmen page, if you will, where we could address issues that come to our attention. I wouldn't go trolling Facebook looking for them, but if somebody posts something that's inaccurate or defamatory towards one of our boards or commissions, I think we need a place that we can go and, not waiting for one of our regularly scheduled meetings, go out and put a correction, put a link to the correct information or whatever, that is actually the board of selectmen's page. It may not be updated very often, we might not put something out more than once every other week. Ideally, if it's correction of false information, we won't put anything out there at all, but the fact that a forum will exist where we can respond, might tend to reduce the amount of misinformation that's circulating, and certainly might reduce the character attacks on some of our volunteers. So I would like to have that, and in order to have that, we need to have some ground rules on how we're gonna do that. So, anyway, this is a starter document. If you don't like it, we can certainly talk about changing it. You know, I've already said, let's just delete the yellow highlighted paragraph entirely, and we can add a sentence about, unless some compelling reason exists to do so, let's not have comments. I mean, that, let's have people call in and ask their questions. And then if they wanna put a supplemental post out, they're saying, here are some of the questions received, but our first last post, boom, there it is.
Right. Danielle?
I'm glad you said it's a draft, because I have quite a few, and I don't know if I should go through them one by one, just things that I see. I'll just throw some out there right now. I'll just throw some out there right now. I don't, you, you talk about use, there's work-related use and personal social media use, but use isn't defined, so that would have to be, it's mentioned as being posts or logging into and providing personal updates. So I don't think that is defined well enough. You know, would someone liking a page on something that someone in the town didn't like, would that be against the policy? So those are just some things we have to, and that's on Twitter as well as Facebook and probably Instagram and all of them, just a simple like. So just some other things to think about.
To think on Twitter, too.
Yeah. And I think social, yeah, probably the definition of social media would have to be more specific. I mean, just, just some, just some language, I, I think there is something here that department director is responsible for ensuring content is not stale. What's stale mean? And I mean, who's going to monitor this as well? If this is coming from the department head, who's going to sit there and monitor this? Just another thing to think about. The, the, let's see. Oh, the purposes section where you have correcting faults or misleading, misleading is going to open us up into who decides what is misleading. Faults is pretty easy, that's almost black and white, but when you start getting into what's misleading, I don't know if that's a language that I would include. Again, who would determine that? There's language in here that talks about protected classes and it's kind of like a bucket of things in there that aren't necessarily protected class that I'm used to from law and case law. So that would have to be, I mean, there's different protected classes for housing, different protected classes for employees, that, that's a whole nother area that we'd have to muddle through. We... Oh, and you, you just kind of alluded to this, well, not accepting comments. In here, it says that we do not accept comments. So that would, we would have to decide on a policy of that before that's even included because that hasn't been determined. Some of the copyright, copyright, I mean, this is just, some of this is just more informational, I think, for, and I don't know if I would include everything in here that's informational or abide by copyright law. I don't think anybody's a...
I'm certainly amenable to cutting this thing down.
What's that?
I'm certainly amenable to cutting this thing down.
Yeah, yeah, because copy, I don't, I don't think anybody is an expert on copyright law. I'm not even, obviously not copy, but, uh, let's see, just some other things, just public record law, we'd have to be specific, right to no law or say ninety-one A.
I don't want to go... The night's going to be long. I guess I'm wondering if maybe people want to send comments to Jennifer and she can update the draft for the next meeting.
Or it's going to probably be more than correction, it's probably, we're waiting here for...
Yeah, I'm trying, I'm trying to figure out, we're dealing with corrections or rewrite.
I'm going to stop, I'm going to stop.
Okay, all right. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. John, thanks for doing this. I want to be really grateful and kind in my comments because I'm going to bring a sign ordinance in a couple of weeks that you all may just hate, but I just had a couple of comments. I did focus on the protected class language. I'm, I'm not sure all of the examples there are actually protected classes. For example, I don't think military status is a protected class, but whether it is or not, we may not need to list all of them, you know, using one might be fine. There's a, later on in respecting protected speech, we say, we're talking about speeches unprotected and we talk about the language that is defamatory in nature. And that's, it's a very hard call to know whether something is defamatory or not and it's different. I mean, you can say a lot more bad things about the five of us than you can about, you know, Jennifer or Dean, so, and it's not defamatory, even though it's the exact same thing. So I might just delete that example, but... I don't know that we'd want to use any town websites, whether departmental or hypothetical BLS site, to use borderline defamatory language.
Absolutely.
We would want to be clean and proper.
Absolutely. So, I mean, those are just a couple of things, but more than anything else, I just thank you for doing this because, you know, it's a lot of work.
Again, a lot of this was, looked like it had been written by a lawyer and this thing is half the size of what it was when I started, but I'm perfectly prepared to produce it some more and, you know, and put in good sense guidelines and, you know, use your best judgment. If you're wrong, you're wrong, but, you know, we don't want to get in trouble with this, 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 or this, so use your best judgment, that, that's fine.
Can I ask if you checked into other towns?
I did.
Policies?
I did.
And what were theirs like?
They looked a lot like what you have in front of you, only even more complex and cumbersome. I mean, I have, I have a town where, you know, there's forms that you have to fill out to request permission to open a departmental website or Facebook page and we're well past that point, so I just struck all that stuff. But I mean, it's as convoluted as you want it to be. And since most of our policies are not especially convoluted and not especially detailed, I didn't really want to go there. I left, I left in a lot of stuff that I'd rather not have in it, but I figure it's easier for you guys to say, let's take this out than it is, why don't we have something here?
I can tell you when I asked my listserv for examples of social media policy, no one shared one, nobody. And everyone, the ones who did respond said, we're working on one because this is just such a difficult thing to get nailed down, that they're just kind of avoiding putting an actual policy and hoping it all goes well.
Your thoughts, Tom?
Well, this is the first time I've read it. I'm glad that Jennifer made this readable. However, Facebook, half the stuff you see is untrue, unfounded and complete lack of knowledge with people just because they want to say something. So I don't use Facebook, I don't plan to use Facebook, but if there's anything that we as selectmen want to sign or put out there, I'll naturally, you know, go behind that. But all this other stuff, to me, is just garbage, so go with it as you will.
Yeah, I, I would, I, I was trying to figure out how to make this, these pieces add together and unfortunately, I think it includes you. Because these three people can't be communicating outside of the meeting. So if, if you want to funnel your suggestions to Jennifer or even, well, I won't go all the way that. The only comment that I have is, I think this is a, one piece of the puzzle. And there's another piece and that's, I don't think this does it and that's getting a forward-facing piece out there that we are releasing information as you try to do all the time, as others try to do. And, I mean, I've already said this, we've already agreed to it, I think. You forwarded me the Mount Vernon, I'll call it a newsletter flyer.
The Mount Vernon Flyer.
Okay. And, and I thought it was remarkable, coming out of a small town, and it was, it's an email subscribe thing and so there is no commenting, there's none of that, but it, it gets accurate information out in front of people. And if you get accurate information, then the rest of this stuff...
And you, and people sign in for it. They opt in.
So, you know, that may be a route for us to go. The problem with that, just like everything else, is finding somebody with the time to contribute to it on a regular basis. But maybe you would forward that out to everyone so they could see it.
There's nothing that says we can't do both.
Absolutely, and if I didn't, if I wasn't clear on that.
Facebook posts out there looking to the newsletter.
I didn't mean to say it otherwise.
Yeah, we, we need something forward-looking, ideally proactive in terms of getting information out. You know, the recent controversy about spraying for invasions. We got in front of that and we actually told people it was coming and that there was something there and if you had opinions, you could come. And we might not have been blindsided by it when it suddenly blew up in our faces. So I mean, there's things that we should be able to figure out that would be of interest to people. If we could get in front of some of those things and put them out there, then that would be much more transparent than having people discover through some other route that things are happening they didn't know about and they probably don't like. So how we do that, I mean, the more channels, the better because some people get emails, some people will read it, some people get physical newspapers, some people go to Facebook. And, you know, we just can't be a one source. We can't say, come to the website or you're not going to learn anything. That's just not friendly.
Okay. All right, so we'll talk about it again, I'm not sure if it'll be the next meeting or... Thank you.
Okay, next thing is the town health officer, it says appointment, but it should just be nomination. If you look at the form, the board of selectmen need to nominate a health officer, the current health officer is Scott Tenney. He is probably who you want to nominate to do it again. I believe it's a three-year appointment, but you nominate him to the state and then the state appoints, so.
Anyone can make...
Mr. Chairman, I move that we nominate Scott Tenney as the health officer for the town.
Second.
Questions or comments? See none, all those in favor?
Now to the discussion and possible acceptance of the cable franchise agreement.
Yeah. You want to start?
Yeah, so I heard two things that I think maybe weren't going back to Comcast on. One was the addition of Buck Meadow and the rec department as a hookup. And the other one was a five-year, what a five-year agreement would look like. I, I don't have any opposition to going back on those two questions. I think where I come out on this generally is, this is only the cable TV side, it's not the internet side. In fact, it cannot be the internet side, that's unregulated, unregulatable by the town. Cable TV is still used by some people, but is a dying service. If, you know, Comcast wants to give us a ten-year agreement where they agree they're going to provide us, you know, ten years of service from the back room there and they're going to allow us to integrate equipment that does something more modern, I think that's great. I think we ought to go ahead and do it. If the cost is a little bit less for the, those people who still subscribe to cable TV, that's also great. But I think it's probably worth going back to Comcast and asking them on those other two issues, whether we just give Dean that authority or whether we want to see it again, I'm open.
So one issue is the length of the contract, what was the other issue?
Adding connections to Buck Meadow and the rec department in that appendix.
Do you know, what do they have now? I mean, there must be some kind of internet connection in the rec department. They're on, they're on, I mean, they send out email, somehow they're connected to the internet.
Well, and I can tell you that these departments pay for their internet. I know that, so I don't understand what that is.
So it's not internet, it's cable TV.
Yeah, but, but the internet is coming from the same...
Same pipe.
Right.
But I mean, all that franchise agreement can do is agree to connect cable TV.
The only point I'm making is the connection is paid for, whether it's in that appendix or not, they're, they're paying for it.
Yeah, we all pay for the internet portion. The only thing we get without cost to the town is certain basic cable TV bookups for certain town, certain buildings in town, I think.
But I don't think there's a TV in this building for us. I mean, except in there, it's not like people are watching TV in their offices.
Expect most, I hope that most of our people are not watching TV.
I mean, I will say, I've been in towns that actually, everybody had a TV on their desk. Nobody viewed anything.
The towns?
Yeah, there are towns that...
It might be worth having Dean follow up.
They get their news, they're supposed to watch the news and to know, you know.
Public Works is one of the buildings in Eric's here, so maybe you know more than we do. Do you have cable TV?
Yes, we do have cable TV. We use it primarily to watch the weather in the winter, keep an eye on the different weather forecasts. Yeah, we do.
But your department still pays for the internet, which is what?
Correct.
So you're just not paying the cable portion, I suppose, or we don't even know.
I'm not sure about that.
I thought we paid for it, but I think they probably paid for it.
It was just a hookup? That's what these buildings are?
Well, I don't know what that appendix is, other than a list of town buildings with, with a connection. I'm not sure if that list...
TV connection.
Yeah.
So it might be worth having Dean ask Craig how he gets his internet and how does he pay for it? Is it provided as part of the town's network? Is it a separate internet connection that he has to bring in and pay for a bunch?
It's probably in here if we can find where that...
Jennifer, you know the answer to that question?
So there's two, we have two bills for recreation, one at PBD Mill Environmental Center and one at the Recreation Department, and it's a monthly bill. And we're actually still considered a residence because we're in a residential neighborhood and we've resisted going to a business plan because it's more expensive. And because there's only three people who really work in the building, so the needs are small. As far as cable TV, I heard rumors at, for Craig, for Nancy, that there was TV being watched at the rec department many years ago, but I've never seen a TV in operation there.
So they do have the ability there?
I would guess that they would have the ability to watch TV, I would guess. I don't know if they have cable.
Oh, you know what?
Cable. You know, they probably have cable into the building, right? Because it was a, was a residence.
What about Buck Meadow? Do you have any idea what that is?
I don't, I don't know anything about Buck.
So Buck Meadow must have internet connection as well.
Section six point four is what, it, it says, they continue to provide origination capability.
Oh, so that's, that's broadcast, isn't it?
Town Hall is the hub for the access channel.
Right, and there's a list of the places to do that, three schools, us and the library can originate.
Should we try to add PMEC to that list?
What's that?
Should we try to add PMEC to the list?
I mean, only if anybody's going to use it. I mean, I guess, I mean, most places, I mean, if you have internet, right, you're...
Streaming.
On our TV for some reason, they'd be watching whatever they want to watch on the internet.
I, I would think that they'd be streaming something from YouTube or, right?
Is everybody in agreement that we go back and we ask about the, the length of the contract and for some clarification on this appendix?
I might be more receptive to the deal, even a ten-year deal, if I had some better understanding of how they're going to modernize the stuff in that room. I'm tired of taking twenty-year-old technology and trying to bolt it on to ten-year-old technology and hearing about the two-year-old technology that we can't make work with the other antique technology. So if they want to help us modernize that room, I'd be a whole lot more receptive to a ten-year deal. But right now, it sounds like, well, we'll give you some money and you can spend it on that if that's what you want to do.
Actually, it's too bad you didn't ask that before because, I mean, one of the things that we had, one of the things that we had him do was put together a list of what needed to be done to upgrade it. And that's how we came with the sixty thousand dollars, because we could have gotten as much of it as we wanted upfront. It's one of the things that was...
We asked Chris Gentry, we gave him a set of functional requirements, you know, we need Zoom to integrate with cable TV, we need to, you know, single camera feeds, single video feeds, things like that. He says, yeah, we already do that in Milford, here's what you need to do that. And that's how we came up with the list and that's where the sixty K came from. Comcast's end of it is just going to switch it to digital, you know, they have to do that part of it and we got them to do that in here. And once that's digital, all of what he recommended would go in that room and it's modern equipment. Yes?
Section three-three, the parties agree that franchisee will provide basic cable service to the locations identified in Exhibit A and has the right in accordance with applicable law to deduct the value of those services from franchise fees. So basically, we'd be paying for them anyway.
You pay for them anyway.
They could broadcast something right there. PBD Mill.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
It's Chris Gentry.
I just, I've been watching the whole time. I can explain that the cable services is basically to provide basic cable to those specific places. Usually, it's places that may need it for watching the weather, or watching the news, or something of a similar type. And they put that in there, and that's something that we made sure was held over from the previous contract. Because some of the more recent contracts, they are trying to get away from providing free basic service. So, we made sure that that stayed in there. That's why I was pointing that out earlier. But like I had said earlier, we'd be more than happy to talk to Brian and see if we can add those other two to the service.
Thank you. Does anyone have questions anymore?
Any other questions about the equipment?
No. If it's already been specked out and that 60 grand is enough to modernize that room, that goes a long way towards one of my concerns. I'd still like to understand the difference between a 5- and 10-year deal and how it is that franchise fees go up even after they don't pay us any money.
Chris, did you hear John's comments?
I'm sorry, no. The, you have a question about the franchise fees? Is that what I heard?
The question is, if it's a five-year contract instead of a 10-year contract, and they're not going to pay us the $150,000 as part of the five-year deal, how is it that the franchise fees go up when their expenses go down? That sounds like Enron accounting to me.
Well, that, honestly, that would be a more Comcast issue. I don't know how their finances work as far as that goes. All I know is that the FRC, which is the franchise-related cost, which is included in that $160,000, also is a part of doing, like, part of the upgrades in the back of the room and everything else. I am not sure where the cost would necessarily go up past that point of what you already have. But I do know that you guys were supposedly getting more money per year as part of your prior contract. So, if this contract does not go through, then they will probably continue on what the previous contract set. Now, that being said, I just want to make sure that you guys understand that not having a franchise agreement in place, basically considering what this current franchise is, is basically a continuation of your prior contract. The FCC and the Cable Act in particular does state that there has to be a franchise for cable. So, I just want to make sure that that is known, because what that could mean is that if Comcast wanted to, and this is not a threat or anything, it's just to let you guys understand that if there is no franchise contract in place, that Comcast could just up and leave too.
I'm sorry, Ms. Chairman. This is speculation, but if they're going to replace some equipment in the back room there, and they're going to amortize it over five years instead of 10, maybe that's where the rate goes. But that's speculation.
Let's ask them the question and let them give the answer.
Okay, so wait.
Could I just make, could I just make one other comment about the five-year versus 10-year? Because there's a lot of, there's a lot of, and I'm sitting here thinking, but, I mean, you've basically been out of contract for, I don't know, at least three or four years. I'm not sure. It must have been almost five years. And I guess I'd just ask, do you really want to be doing this again in five years? We're really talking about, you're going to be putting together a cable committee in three years to spend two years getting to review the committee, to review the contract, to get ready to negotiate and get right back where we are now. I mean, that's, there's only so much, I guess one of the issues has become, and I, and I used to negotiate some of these contracts too, back in the early 2000s and before that. And you used to really have things you were negotiating. And then the federal government got involved in it and cut back. I mean, the franchising authorities, you guys used to be able to, back in the beginning, you used to be able to tell them what channels you wanted them to play and not play. I remember a huge fight because they didn't want a religious channel in one town I was in with the, with the, with the person, and they, and they used to have some control over that. But between the state and the federal government, just about everything is boilerplate now, and all you're really sort of negotiating over is these small things that we're talking about. And if you get it where you want it now, I guess I'm not sure why you'd want to talk about it again in three years, like, you know, to five years. I don't know. It's up to you folks, as we know, I won't be here.
I don't want to do it, but I think John's got a reasonable question. I mean, we were told, hey, look, cost is different five years to 10 years, and none of us can answer him why. I mean, that's a legit question, you know, let's get the answer. I mean, I think this is our last opportunity to get something out of Comcast, you know, whether it's five years or 10 years from now. This is going.
I don't know if it's going to change anything, but it's a question that we can't answer any of the needs. So, were you, you going to take that on?
Yeah, I mean, first of all, I would get together.
Okay, all right. And maybe we can get this back on the agenda in a couple of weeks. All right. It's time to go. We're getting closer.
We haven't even got to the second page yet.
We're getting closer and closer. I'll do this one. The Conservation Commission negotiated trails agreement. So, this is the old noble land up on Mac Hill Road that sold and was posted, no trespassing, when the new owner took possession of it, which would have kept the Conservation Commission trails as a short, short distance of trails that cross from one conservation property to the next across this land. Conservation Commission reached out to the new owner and asked if they would consider a trail agreement across their property, and in fact, it was easily done. And what we have in front of us is the result of that, which is a trail agreement, which the Conservation Commission has used in the past, modified a little bit for this particular piece of land. It has gone past town council and YOCA. Mr. Chairman, I move that we authorize Dean to execute the proposed trail agreement. Second, questions or comments? See none, all is in favor? Aye. All right, we've already done 7.7. And Debbie, we're on to the job description for the Assistant Finance Director.
Before you start, just to go back to that other thing, they set this up for me to sign, so would you authorize me to sign that?
That was my motion.
Oh, was it? Oh, no, sorry, never mind.
If you want to stand, go ahead, but welcome to come closer.
Okay, so we've been kind of talking about this since a long time.
Yep.
And I think, you know, I think everybody's amenable to it. So, I came up with this job description that covers a lot of bases and gives somebody a good idea of what they might expect. I think that this position, it's not only been now, when I was even here the first time, we're constantly running right to the minute on everything. And I think that a full-time, another full-time position will really help the finance department work better. Right now, we're still playing catch-up, so, but we're at, I'm at a point where I can even, I can help direct somebody for a while. It was not even possible to do that. So, I think that the time is, is coming to at least reach out. And I think it'll put some improvements to the department. And I think there's going to be some things that we, that there's, there's no way to do them now. I think the finance department for many years hasn't even, I think Lisa was the last one to really participate in a budget cycle fully, you know. For a long time, Jim and Mary did it, and so there was not that. And that, it should be more participation from finance, doing comparison studies, helping out with insurance evaluations, for instance, would be a possible thing that we could be more involved in. Analyzing debt, you know, what are some other ways to pay for things? I really want to do, and this is an easy one, electronic storage. We have that capability in our current software, and it's just a matter of somebody having the time to get that set up and work on those processes. And another person adds a cross-training and some security and stability in the department and the town. We've all seen what happens when we don't have that. So, I don't know if people have questions or suggestions. I'm open to that with the draft. And I do have some figures, just round numbers, if we went ahead with this, and assume that the total position cost is someplace around $100,000. That's about $8,000 a month, so being optimistic, saying you could get somebody in here by October and through June, that's about $72,000 for this year. One other thing I did want to point out, that last year, FY '21, when things are really, really not running too smoothly in finance, we, the town paid $82,000 in essentially part-time help, consulting, temporary, and actual part-time people. $82,000. So, that pretty much funds the new position. And it's that, that type of, you're getting the job done is, in that way, is not effective, it's not sustainable, whereas having, having a position, I think, is a much better route.
Let me see what input they may be starting with, Tom.
I know, we have talked about this for a long time. Seems sweet and reasonable if we can find the money. This would be approved as soon as you could hire somebody, is that correct? So, you have not advertised, so. Price range for something like this, you figure between 80 and 90, or less?
This is, the $100,000 comes from a starting point of about $60,000 in actual wages, and then after that, you've got your payroll taxes, the...
Well, the benefits.
457B match as it is, and I've put something in there for some kind of health insurance, because that person would be eligible for that. So, it's, it's really a whole package of the benefits that would be offered to a full-time person in this position.
Yeah. I am all set. Thank you.
So, I guess I have a couple of questions. The title of this is Assistant Finance Director. Other departments have deputy directors. We have a deputy DPW director, we have a deputy fire chief. They're both expected to be able to step in and handle it if the chief isn't there. Are you looking for an assistant, or are you looking for a deputy?
I always wanted a deputy.
I want to be a deputy.
Do I get a badge? No, that's actually, no, that's a good point. And I, I'm not sure that I would be, I'm not clear enough as to the distinctions, but yes, it would be good. Ideally, it would be nice if this person could step into the finance director position.
It would be nice if you could take a three or four-week vacation and come back and things weren't all screwed up.
And it would be nice.
So, I think you need to think about it, and if what you're really looking for is a deputy who's just less experienced but could grow into the job, that's different from an assistant who probably doesn't have all of the right things that you need to grow into the job. And if you want an actual deputy, it's probably going to be more expensive than what you're thinking, because I don't think 60 grand buys you an actual deputy. It might buy you an assistant.
And, yeah, and I, and that's the other thing that, you know, we'll see what the market can bear, what we put out there. I'm not positive either.
It depends on what you advertise is what you get. I mean, you'll get people who are underqualified for whatever job you send out. Rarely will you get somebody who's way overqualified because the salary is too low. So, if what you're looking for is a deputy, start there, and if you can't find any, maybe you go out and you look for an assistant at a lower number. And then over a two- to three-year period, maybe they grow into the job, maybe they don't. So, I mean, think about that. I think it would be useful for you to have a deputy, even if it took a year or more to train said person to be, you know, the interim director. I'm sure we need one more, more help in the finance department. I've been here doing this for a long time. Every time somebody leaves the finance department, things go out of whack. And the longer that person is gone without being replaced, the more out-of-whack things get. So, I already know we need more people, because two people can run it if they're both well-trained. One person can't, no matter how well-trained they are. So, I think we need three, just to have a certain amount of redundancy and some extra capacity to do things like salary surveys and all that, which we don't have to do if we have a loss. So, I'm all in favor of this thing. I'd like to see what you can get. I would try for the more qualified position with the idea that maybe they grow into the job, take it away from you, and then worry about finding another deputy for that person down the road. But, you know, I mean, you were here when we commented with Gail that replacing department heads with good people is one of the hardest things we do, and it gives almost no visibility. So, I would rather get somebody who could step into your job, not necessarily day one, but soon, than somebody who would take two or three years to come up to the speed to where they could do that, because you're not going to be here two to three years from now. So, that, that's my comments.
Okay. We have the, good, some good thoughts there.
I like the job description. I don't have any changes or additions or anything to change on there. I like it. Just my two thoughts on terminology. I like the idea of the sound of a deputy, but really, I think we should probably just use terminology that's used with other towns and their assistants, just because it may make it easier for someone to go from, go from a different town, kind of keep the same terminology. I don't know if there's different words.
And I can look into that, because I'm, I'm really not sure. It was a good point. I hadn't thought of that. So, I can, I can look into that and just see if there's something more common.
You can change the title on it and then see what you can find.
Yeah. Yeah, I think that will probably be the tough thing. I know, I've been reading articles that college graduates are not going into public work, which makes our job difficult.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. I support adding a position. I have one thought for you. You advertise this today, you advertise for somebody that joins our retirement system and uses Springbrook. And, you know, a year from now, maybe less, you might be able to advertise for a person, knowing we have committed to New Hampshire Retirement System and with a new software system. Aren't you going to have a much better, you know, a potential field of candidates in that latter circumstance than now?
Potentially. I just feel like to get to that point, I, having the help now will have, help us get there. I feel like if we don't do anything, and actually, I'm going to address this finance software shortly.
I know.
So, we'll save that for surprise.
So, it's just a thought. I mean, if you, if you say, "Look, we need the help now," okay, fine. But I guess I would try to find somebody. If we, if we tell you to go ahead with this, you know, particular brand of software, maybe you look for somebody that has that experience already. And you can't commit to anybody on the retirement system, but, you know, if a couple of months from now, we've made decisions, that might help you. They may not be, they may have a gap year, something like that, but that's all.
I'd just mention and just remind everybody that in 10 months, she won't be here.
I know.
I mean, if it takes, it takes three or four months to get somebody, which, you know.
The best is the enemy of the good.
Is there any harm in, you make a valid point. Is there any harm in starting this as fast as possible and evaluating the response that we get?
And that's kind of what we'll end up doing, you know, we could, yeah, we, I have no, really no idea, but especially it's such an odd job market right now, so I don't.
One last thing, your $82,000 last year we spent for help, it doesn't really pay for this position because the comparison is this year. We have you, we don't need that help. We're going to spend extra money, we're going to spend $100 to pay extra.
Right, right.
And we're okay with that, I think.
Yeah, I mean, we could spend $100,000 a year to get an employee that we developed and whatnot, or we could continue to spend 80 grand for the Band-Aids.
Right.
Rita, come in here and tell us how screwed up we are.
In not necessarily the kindest way. So are we, is this
I think, I think we need to do a motion on this because we're creating a position at least for some, at least for the remainder of this year anyway.
I make a motion to approve the job description for the new position of either assistant or deputy finance director at the director's discretion.
Okay, so I'm
One second.
I have a comment. I think that's fine. I think we're going to need another motion to authorize the hiring or to authorize the search, the efforts, the search.
Oh, okay.
Okay, so we have a motion to authorize the job description. All those in favor? So then is anybody
I move that we authorize the town administrator and the finance director to begin the search for the person to fill this job description as soon as possible.
Second.
Questions or comments on that? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Why the further call? You, that's good that you did that. Once again, we talked about this, some of us, about another position. In terms of the range that we're going to advertise, I don't know what labor grade four the range is.
14. And if you get
I have it.
So let's give it
If you want her to have some flexibility in terms of who she picks, the wider you let her go on that range, the better. I've been, I've been keeping people down to advertising the first three steps because in the past, selectmen didn't want to go beyond that. But if you're willing to give her a little more flexibility in where she might be able to hire, that would be good to know.
So I did, I did prepare just to come up with the figure. I started with the grade 14 and I started with grade one, or step one and step two. Step one is an annual total of just under $58,000 for wages and step two is an annual total of just under $59,000.
And I just did step six and that's 63/6.
And then, so that was grade 14, so step six is the 30/60?
Yeah, the 63/6 and change.
Yeah.
And I bring that up because the discussion that we had the other day was whether or not you need leeway up to, in that instance, anyway, grade six.
I also feel like that's a kind of a, and I don't know, you don't want to undervalue yourself going, you know, advertising, but at the same time, you don't want to go crazy either, so.
What are your thoughts?
If we put it out there and put it at, I, I don't think you're going to, I think it has to be at least step two. I just don't think you're going to get somebody with a four-year degree and any experience at all without being at least at that $60,000 mark. And to go to five or six, I, I think you just, you increase your pool.
I widen the range. I mean, I would use the wider range, particularly given high inflation. I mean, I think people's expectations are going to be higher.
Right, I think we've kneecapped ourselves in the past by going in too low, hoping to find a unicorn that came cheap. We're not setting any success.
So I, I think, I think what you're hearing is you're okay up to step six, you know, if you think the candidate fits that.
Yeah, yeah, definitely. Okay, that's, that's, that sounds good. Okay, so software?
Yes.
So I think that the, the big, the single biggest problem with Springbrook is that it's, we are the only municipality in New Hampshire that has this software. When we first signed up for it, it was a company out of New York and they were planning to expand into New Hampshire and we were going to be their poster child. The week after we signed the contract, they merged with the company in Oregon and they went to the West Coast. So they no longer care about New Hampshire. So that's a problem. It's, it'll be a problem with New Hampshire Retirement, any kind of specific reporting for New Hampshire. The software support is not terrible, the software itself is not terrible, it has some redeeming qualities, it's usable. All that being said, there is a new software that's out there and they're not that new. They've been around for, in New Hampshire for about 10 years. They, it's BSNA. I've just picked this company because I've, I've been in touch with them on and off for the last two, three years. I've seen demonstrations of their software and I've heard lots of towns that are on board with it and really like it. So because of that, I reached out to the representative that I've been talking to and asked him to give us some kind of an estimate. So I gave him some basic information on the town. They need to know basically what our budget is, like our overall budget, how many people are using the system, how many payroll, you know, they need to know kind of payroll things. So I gave him all the information he needs, so it's a relatively accurate estimate. And it came in at about $100,000 for the initial, the initial cost of the software, the implementation, the training, all the setup, all that stuff. Then annually, their cost is going to be about $28,000. Yeah, which is less, I couldn't believe how much less it is than what we're currently paying. We're paying more like $50,000. So all things being equal, the $100,000 would be paid back in four years just from the reduced annual cost and you've got a software that functions better. The other reason I really wanted to get something at least on your radar is that they are tracking out 14 to 18 months. So if you said tonight, "Yeah, you know, this, this is the only place we want to look at, we're going to definitely get this software," let them know, that's how far they're tracking out. So just to kind of get set up and get in there, and I don't know how that would even work, and I'm not saying that we should do that, I think we should look at a couple of different companies instead of, we had some kind of a commission last time we did this. Were you here when we did this?
No, you were, it was just before
John, that's right. And I think you were on the committee.
To understand what we were dealing with back in the day, we were running a software called Amaze, which ran on Windows 95 server. Even back then, Windows 95 was guaranteed. We had to keep one box around just so that we could run our financial system. And I gather we're still using Amaze for certain interfaces.
Yeah, yeah.
But never mind that. What we did by going to the software, and yes, we sold the plan and they were going to move into New Hampshire, we were going to be their flagship municipality, and then a week later, they weren't heard, they were bought out. And the guy that bought them didn't want anything to do with their business. So we kind of lost out on that. On the other hand, we got a chart of accounts that was much better than what we had for Amaze. We can probably take it as is or slightly modify and take it to a new system. We have, the software is now in the cloud. So migrating into another cloud-based system would be a whole lot easier than what we did getting off the Windows 95 box into this one. Interfaces to the other systems, I don't know about that yet, we have to figure that out.
They do, they do have that.
Yes. But we also have everybody who probably needs to be on the system, currently on the system. Back then, we had people who used Amaze and people who prayed to the Amaze gods, hoping they could get a report out that would tell them what they wanted. Right now, people that need to use the system go in and use the system. So we're in much better shape now than we were when we went to the system. Having said that, they're not interested in New Hampshire, they're not interested in municipalities, it's hard to hire people that know how to run this thing and also know something about municipal finance. So I'm all, conceptually, I'm all in favor of doing this. Yes, their backlog might currently be 14 months, but if we go into a recession, that backlog's going to shrink to six months or less. And so, I mean, I wouldn't get too excited about that. But yes, I think we needed to go through an RFP process. I think we need to have a spec, we need to go out there, we need to have two or three people, might even need to bring Rita back again, because she was one of the people that steered us towards this one. She may not remember that, but I do. But again, we're in much better shape to migrate to a different platform now than we were before. I expect it to be much less painful and much faster. Having said that, it's also going to be a pain in the butt, especially if you've got two new people running the department. So we'll have to see how this plays out with the ability to staff up and replace you and do other things. But the challenge is not nearly as bad, moving from one cloud-based system to another.
I agree, yeah.
And one of the advantages of the current system, the Springbrook system, is it was the most user-friendly system that we looked at.
It, it really isn't a bad system. You have to take the time to look at it and get some coaching.
If you properly trained on it, it works great, yeah.
Yeah, and
But I mean, I'm sure there are other moderately user-friendly systems that are more municipally oriented and easier to find people that know how to run them. I, I'm not married to Springbrook, you know, the deal changed the moment after we signed the contract.
It did, yeah.
But we got a lot out of it, we've learned a lot, we've trained a lot of users in how to use computer systems. So I think migrating to a different platform would be a whole less, a lot less traumatic than it was to go into Springbrook.
Danielle?
I'm in agreement to move forward as whether it's this or another one, an RFP. And I know we've talked about new software, so I'm all for it.
And realistically, if we got, if we got the other person, I can't do this by myself with, you know, there's going to have to be another person, it's get the person first. So let's pretend we could do something by January. You know, that's, to even put the RFP together, start talking to, you know, software people, maybe I can even, you know, if I, if I had to stay on part-time for a little bit to help with whatever, there's a lot that needs to be done, even if it would be easier, which I totally agree with, I think it would be.
When you put your ad out in the paper, you might advertise that experienced migrating software platform can get less.
I was at one point going to add that in, I wonder if I did say that, but that's a good idea. Yeah, I'll look, I'll look.
Bill?
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. I'm supportive of moving forward. I want a system that is widely used on other towns so that we have an experienced base and some people who are familiar with it. But I think we ought to go ahead. And I might, we haven't talked about funding, but this is one where the initial cost, the $100,000, I'd use ARPA funds for that in a heartbeat. I think it's a perfect use of that.
Go find the money.
I think it's good. I'd, I'd go for it. It's just unfortunate that it takes so long to get implemented, right? Almost a year?
Yeah.
It must be good.
But like John said, and even the guy that I was talking to, he said, you know, it's, it just depends. You know, things happen, they sell things and they don't go through, whatever. So at least it's on the table. I just wanted to throw it out there, see if, you know, what people thought and
So I, we're all in agreement that it's something that has to be done. My only concern, and it's already been addressed, is to make sure we go through an RFP process so that we get a clear idea.
Is it worth putting out a feeler to MRI to see if they've got somebody who can help write the RFP?
I don't think so. Your, your point is a valid point, but I'm not sure that MRI is picking up our phone anymore.
Well, and I think we might have other options, we'll, we'll see.
Okay.
There are other consultants who could do this if we wanted to bring in extra
Well, the other thing is, there's a lot of people that have done it. I mean, you can always steal an RFP from somebody else, that's pretty easy to do. And the other thing about MRI doing it is I think they have their own financial software now that they might actually bid on it.
They are, that, yes. As a matter of fact, MRI does have their own software, which is probably another reason why Rita hated this software.
But you're right, there's, there's got to be a slew of other
Sure, there's a slew of other people who'd be happy to help us do that for money.
Munis is still out there, there's, there's a lot of big companies that service a lot of towns, so.
Okay, we're making progress. You know, I continue to hear from you each time and I hear these little things that I probably shouldn't even be repeating, but they tell me that you're invested in this and we appreciate it very, very much.
Meanwhile, just in case anybody was wondering, my granddaughter has arrived.
Congratulations.
She was born on Sunday and I'm going to see her tomorrow.
For you.
Tell her we all said hi.
Do I look any older and more
Bet you've been smiling.
Thank you.
Good night.
Come on up, Eric. Thanks for your patience. Make sure to follow. I'll do my best. Okay, you, you got a couple that we can ban out?
I'm hoping so. I'll start with the first one. DPW internal promotion. So there is a vacancy we would like to fill via a promotion, through a promotion from a highway crew member, Vinnie Lapoli, who has been filling in for the vacant position at the transfer station of lead attendant. And I just want to say, Vinnie has been doing a fantastic job out there, very good. He, he's been a great employee since we hired him. He started part-time at the transfer station, then was hired, you know, promoted to full-time at the highway crew in the highway department. But he's just been a fantastic employee and I, I really think he's going to be an excellent asset to us out there. So here tonight to ask for approval to appoint him to lead, lead transfer station attendant effective tomorrow.
Questions, Eric? Anybody here to make a motion?
Ms. Chairman, I move to appoint Vincent Lapoli to the position of lead transfer station attendant effective September 13th, 2022.
Second.
Questions or comments on the motion? Hearing none, all those in favor? Aye?
You know, and just one thing to follow up on that. So we will intend, now that Vinnie's going to the transfer station to post, you know, for the vacant driver labor position at DPW, really immediately, I don't know if I need a motion for that or not, but we would like to fill that immediately in hopes of having somebody in a plow truck.
It's an approved and funded position, just go fill it.
Before we get away from that other one though, is there a, I may be missing it here, but is there a, a grade and step for that promotion?
Yes, it's grade seven, step three.
Okay, do these guys usually, you guys usually approve that, that's basically approving the pay?
Oh, okay. Okay, you made that motion.
I made that one.
You made that motion.
You made that motion. Ms. Chairman, I would further move that we make this promotion to grade, what was it?
Seven, three.
Seven, step three.
Second.
Questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor? Aye?
Thank you. Second item for me tonight is, so I understand, you know, we've updated regulations, Nick had worked on that for, or the procedures for the CIP process, you know, part of which these projects should be brought to the board if they're new. I'm new to this process this year. I've already presented this, you know, last week to Ways and Means. This is, I have a new project I'd just like to update the board with tonight and just hear any feedback. The project is that our existing fuel tanks, the gasoline tank and the diesel tank at Public Works, they're underground storage tanks, including the whole, the pump system, the alarm system, everything involved with the tanks themselves, they're outdated. The tanks were installed in 1990. They have a useful service life of approximately 30 years, which we've already surpassed. Last, you know, over the winter in December, in Last, you know, over the winter in December, in communication with the state to make sure that we were all up to date with our, you know, underground storage tank regulations and annual inspections. In fact, last year was our three-year inspection from the state. They recommended that we start looking at replacing these tanks as soon as possible. So at this point, you know, we looked at, and we got an estimate from a company that had done some work for us before installing those tanks, and it's a very pricey project, and we're talking about a project that's, you know, over half a million dollars. The plan for this year in the CIP is not to ask for the money to replace the tanks, but to ask for some money for engineering, break this project up into multiple stages so that we can go ahead and look for, you know, some design, and find out, you know, what is the appropriate size tanks? You know, is the tanks we have, do they work for us? Do we need something smaller, bigger? Look at some engineering concerns, answer some questions. And part of that $25,000 that we'd be asking for would also be, you know, a cost estimate, a more detailed cost estimate that we could then use to potentially put something out to bid the following year for planning purposes. So I'm happy to answer any questions tonight, but I wanted to discuss, you know, this project that I've put into our CIP plan this year. Because I do understand it's part of the regulations, part of the new procedures.
Thank you. We'll just check with everyone. I think that part of what we've, well, the part of this that we've got to consider tonight is how we fund the $500,000 if that doesn't come out of the budget.
You, the state checked on that and said it was not looking good, right? So, I mean, did they give you any indication of the timeframe? This is something that you're moving on pretty quickly, and was that the feedback that you received from the state?
It was. You know, they're steel double-walled tanks. Double-walled is a safety, you know, precaution. Plus, they're almost in, if you could think of a bathtub, you know, or some sort of liner. That's, the tanks are actually in this liner as well for extra protection in case there was ever a leak. But we don't want ever a situation where we're looking at, you know, fuel leaking into the ground or anything like that.
And do you have any indication of how long? You probably don't, but if new tanks are installed, is the life going to be the same, a 30-year life?
As I understand it, but I think that's something that would come out of the engineering, you know, to look at some options that are out there for replacement, to include maybe even above-ground tanks. But whatever the case, yeah, I mean, as far as I understand, 30 years for underground storage tanks seems to be the number.
But I'm just thinking forward-looking, that's a huge expense and it's probably only going to get higher. So that might be something that would have to be in somehow in the CIP. Always, maybe, a certain amount. That's all I got.
I don't have any questions. Thank you, Eric.
You're welcome.
No questions?
So I've seen this before at CIP, so I had my heart attack earlier. The way to do this is probably the way we did the police station renovations, so the three-year capital reserve fund, and if we miss a year, then it just takes another year to get it properly funded. And if we have an emergency, if we have to come up with $150,000, it's a whole lot cheaper than trying to find half a million dollars. So that's probably the mechanism I think we'll go. But the other thing to consider is part of the ongoing potential reconfiguration of DPW. If you had it to do today, would you put the tanks in the same place they are now? Would you move them to somewhere else? If you had moved them to somewhere else, maybe you could put the new tanks in and then take the old tanks out, either concurrently or after the fact. But if you have to put them in the same place, the old tanks have to come out and you have to condition the hole, and then you put in the new stuff. So maybe that's part of your engineering study, but it's, what would make sense from a workflow and a vehicle flow perspective to have those tanks, if you could put them anywhere you have, if you wanted to, in DPW?
Yeah, are you asking me, okay?
Just suggesting that you might want to take that into consideration, either now or when you get your engineering study done. If they're not conveniently placed now, this is your opportunity to move them, you know, and get another one for 30 years.
It's a very good point. You know, because another thing we're thinking longer term is really, you know, replacement and update, updating of our facility, you know, which is old, most of it.
Your predecessor had a plan, or at least so he told us, but he never told us what the plan was. Maybe you can talk to him, wherever he is in the world.
Yeah, that's, that's not a bad suggestion.
So Eric, my, again, my only thing is the funding of it. And I think John is probably right, that this is a multiple year, however year, number years it is, I don't know, but a capital reserve. I mean, we could borrow the money, we could do a capital reserve. Different approaches to it. That's really, I think, you're at a stage of doing the engineering and trying to figure out the funding, and I would encourage you to work with Dean and Debbie. And if it's going to be a capital reserve, probably it would be something which is on March's 1st. I think, from what I'm hearing from you.
Can I make a comment? I know he's here about the CIP, so that's why he's focusing on this, but one of the things that him and I have talked about is maybe not replacing the tanks. I mean, there are some towns that don't have their own system. They go to private companies or go to the state. I mean, half a million dollars is a lot to add on to gasoline, right? So I mean, there are, there are other options that other towns use that I presume they'd be looking at, but here he's just in about the CIP, but there are other possibilities out there, a half a million might not be a thing.
So it probably makes sense to do a trade study as part of your evaluation, or have the engineers do it. You know, if you don't replace this, what would you do? How much more would you pay for the gas? How much time would you lose making the trips back and forth, stuff like that?
Yeah, no, they're all fair points, and that was the intention this year one, is to have some money to study this, if you will.
So on a more generic level, at the CIP, Tom Sylvia grabbed Bill and me on the way out and talked to us about, have you considered actually just bonding it, borrowing the money, and then paying it back over five years or whatever, as opposed to pre-funding it in the capital reserve and having it sit there evaporating at 8% a year? I mean, it's an interesting question, one we probably should think about on a number of subjects. But right now, with inflation being what it is, borrowing and paying it back in cheaper dollars makes a lot more sense than it did when it was 1% to 2% inflation. Now, Dwight was violently opposed to debt in any form, I understand that, but that was then and this is now. And it may be that it makes more sense for the taxpayers to take advantage of inflation as opposed to storing it away for three years and having it deflate by 25% over that time.
Both have got their strengths.
They do.
No question about it. I think part of that consideration also has to be the success that we have had with capital reserves. The people, it's an easy plan that people clearly understand, and we've got them, for better or worse, it's all under one roof now. We don't have these different strategies.
Right.
If nothing else, it simplifies it and makes it easy for the voter to understand what our plan is.
Right. But if inflation's still running at 8% to 10%, during the deliberative session, I think it'd be a whole lot easier to explain borrowing money.
Yeah.
If it's down to 5%, that's another story.
Okay. Well, thank you for, you know, hearing me about that. It's something I wish, you know, you know, maybe 10 years ago we were thinking about, but hate to be the bearer of bad news, but it's something we need to think about, and I am, so, thank you.
Thank you. I told you, yeah, oh, trees.
There's just one other thing, and now this is something that is not on the agenda. And if it's something that is postponed to the next meeting, that's entirely up to the board. But I just want to mention quickly and just ask that you might consider, you know, since Wednesday, so it would have been Thursday and into Friday morning, you know, Perry Day, our tree warden in town, our ground, our buildings and grounds foreman, but coincidentally our tree warden, has concerns about two particular trees on Lower Mack Hill that happen to be in scenic road status. And these two trees, you know, there's some concern that there could be a safety concern. This is, I'll say, an abundance of caution. There's nothing that can predict that it's going to fall tomorrow. But due to the, you know, high pedestrian traffic, you know, on Lower Mack Hill especially, we're hoping that the board might consider, you know, granting us authorization to cut and remove those two trees before, rather than foregoing the, you know, planning board process, which can take considerable time. And again, this is out of an abundance of caution. Both trees have been, you know, actually, we've discussed both trees with the residents at both locations on Lower Mack Hill. They're both agreeable to removing them. If you care, I could, you know, show you some pictures of the trees that I have with me tonight, but that's if you're willing to entertain this to me.
Why don't you hand out the paperwork, and then we will first decide if we think we can address this tonight or not?
These are the dead trees?
Yes.
Yeah, I mean, there's, there's one, what is it across from me, it must be 10, 8 or 10 Mack Hill, the Clark House. And then there's another one on the left side of Mack Hill, up at the corner of Jones Road.
On Rob Rose property or on the...
No, on the...
Maybe Tom can correct me on this, but isn't there a process where you go in front of the historic district commission for that kind of thing and get permission to take down the tree?
No, in fact, Perry Day is the one that makes the decision. I have to come before the, the CC.
I know we have the authority to do it on an emergency situation, but this doesn't sound like it's an emergency yet.
Is he characterized it as an emergency?
We're being very concerned. We actually have the arborist from the county forester. And there is especially concern for split maple at number six Mack Hill. There's an abundance of rot in the center of the tree, and the tree's fork that's split, if you will. And one large leader of that split tree is hanging over the road. So again, it's not something that we can say it's imminent, you know, it's going to fall tomorrow, but it would. And, you know, we'd rather take it as soon as possible.
So I think most of us know this already. You're here because typically, being a designated scenic road, you'd have to be in front of the planning board for through a public hearing process.
Correct.
And eventually, presumably, get permission. In a case of, in an emergency, and I'm going to read the portion of the statute, you can come to us and ask for permission to do it now.
Correct.
And that's RSA 231-158. It's a short piece that I'm going to read. Provided, however, the road agent or is it designated may without such hearing, but only with a written permission of the selectmen, remove trees or portions of trees which have been declared a public nuisance, pursuant to RSA 231-145 and 146, when such trees or portions of such trees pose an imminent threat to safety or property. That's if we deal with this tonight or in two weeks, that's what we would be trying to decide. The first que, well, before I get to the first question, you're telling me that you're not, you're not saying that they're going to fall onto the road tomorrow morning, but you're concerned that it's imminent? Is that a fair word?
Yeah, I think that's a fair statement. It's something, again, that we're using an abundance of caution for. Nobody unfortunately can predict, you know, when something like that is or will happen. But it's, it's pretty obvious, and even with the, which we haven't received a report yet from the county forester, but in his verbal opinion to Perry Day when they met on site, that is, it is in a special, and especially a treat of concern, being the number six maple. And I believe he also looked at with Perry, the dead ash that also has a fairly large leader hanging over the right-of-way and edge of road on Mack Hill at number 16, I'm sorry, 14. So that's why we're here tonight.
So I think the first question that I'd like us to answer is, are we, are we willing and comfortable doing, acting on this tonight without it having been placed in the agenda? Or do we want to put it under the agenda and then consider it? Danielle, your thoughts?
Well, I think more importantly for me, you say the written report is not in from that arborist, correct?
Correct.
So I don't feel comfortable doing that tonight, even in addition to the public hearing. I mean, that point, for me, I think we have to have...
So we also have to determine, somebody would have to determine that it was a public nuisance under one of those other RSAs that you mentioned. And I'm trying to do this real time, and it's a little bit too much to do real time for me at this hour. So do we, are these in the right-of-way? I mean, do we own these trees or are these private trees?
We've had some discussion about that, you know, recently, you know, even up here at the town hall, but... So I mean, where this is an old road, it's not clear if that's deed to town property or not, but it's, it's in the right-of-way, yes. Where it's a public nuisance, or in the opinion of our tree warden it is, this is something that the town would be responsible to remove.
Both trees?
Correct.
So would it guess, Eric, that the one up at number 14 is not in the right-of-way?
So the reason why we think that it is, is because apparently where Jones Road used to have a fork right there...
It's that little park where you used to get around.
Correct.
In ancient times.
And that tree rests essentially on the side or within the right-of-way of that, you know, former easement.
I don't know either. I mean, never voted to close it. The town body never voted to close it, we just sort of grassed it over and that was it.
And we didn't have any, we did look for, to see if we could find the records, you know, if the town did discontinue the road and revert back to private ownership, but we couldn't find any such records.
That's probably right.
I think Bob Rowe will know.
I think he'd want to reach out to, you know, get across the street.
So while, you know, I may not be ready to act tonight, I mean, if this is a serious problem, I would not be opposed to a special meeting if we need to do that, you know, before two weeks from now.
All right. So it's, we're going to schedule it in two weeks unless you or Perry or the arborist think that it needs to be soon.
Okay.
And in two weeks, we'll have the report from the forester?
Maybe, that's our hope. I know he's very busy. I believe it's only one individual, you know, that does a lot of this work, maybe there's two in his office. But they cover the whole county, so I know he's done reports for us for various projects before, and it sometimes takes longer than we'd like, you know, to see a report.
Well, if he thinks it's urgent, he should probably put it up on the list. If he thinks it's not urgent, that tells us something too.
Looking at this tree at number six, it is one of 13 trees planted by the Jackson family in honor of the original qualities, probably 50 years ago. And it's, you know, stone wall is usually considered the town's right-of-way. So it's, you know, definitely on the roadside of that stone wall. So it's unfortunate this tree has to be removed, but life goes on.
Not the first one.
I know. Twelve others have gone. I think he's the last one.
But would you have something else?
Oh, just wondering whether it's faster to go to the planning board? I don't think it is, because you've got to go through a whole public hearing process there. And I don't know if it was one or two public hearings, it's one.
The notice for public hearing.
Say again?
What's the notice for public...
The notice requirements, that would be a problem.
I think it's 30 days, if I'm not mistaken.
Yeah, okay.
And the planning board's got a pretty full plate between now and the election.
Can you just name those RSAs again, Peter? All those RSAs?
So it is, the section that I was reading from is 231-158, and it references 231-145 and 146.
Do we need that report or can Perry make that? That's my question I was going to look up.
The determination?
It may be sufficient that we have the written report from him. Well, we'll make the determination.
Yeah. Yeah, I think we consider whatever evidence we presented. I do think we had to give these back to you, or they'll disappear in the next two weeks, so...
I have other copies if you want to keep them, but that's entirely up to you.
What else you got?
He's done.
So we'll be back, we'll be back at the next meeting unless there's something more. Thank you for your time.
Yeah, Eric, thank you. Okay, Jennifer. Last but not least.
I don't know about you guys. Oh, it's my bedtime, okay. COVID-19, so the CDC released an update about three weeks ago. Basically, they're moving all reference to vaccination status when it comes to quarantining. In fact, quarantining really isn't. In fact, quarantining really isn't. Also, anywhere on the CDC guidance now for COVID, because if you are exposed to COVID, you can continue on among your merry way if you're willing to wear a mask. So we've updated, we, I had the chance to get together with the COVID-19 task force. They all agree we should update and follow along with the CDC guidance. So we've removed reference to quarantine. And if you have been exposed to someone with COVID-19, the count still is valid, the day one, the day two. But you can continue working as long as you're willing to wear a mask. And still, still getting tested at least day five after exposure. But things are definitely lightening up with COVID. It's still around. But that's really the change. So we've been able to take it from a two-page document to a one-page document.
John?
Oh, no questions.
Good.
Sounds good to me.
So as I'm reading this, if, if the employee has symptoms, they have to stay home for five days?
If you have symptoms of COVID-19, you might be, if you might have COVID, you do need to stay home, if you're sick, if you're sick.
Okay, and when is it that you don't have to stay home and just wear masks?
If you're exposed, but you have no symptoms. If you've been exposed, what to do if exposed to COVID-19 and not experiencing symptoms?
Okay.
So we've removed the, you know, I realize I probably should have. So we've removed the quarantine language and the language that says, if you're fully vaccinated, this, and if you're not, that, because the CDC has removed any reference to vaccination entirely.
Got it. Any distinction between?
Yes, isn't that, it's amazing.
Okay, I'm good. Thank you. All right, you're asking us to approve this?
I'm asking you to approve this.
Okay.
Move to approve the changes as submitted.
Second. All those, all those in favor?
Aye.
Ask for whatever you want right now.
I know, very much. And, you know, this actually, and I'm glad that this is the, this is the employee policy update. It's, it's really very bland. The biggest change, rather than changing some language so it's up, so it matches what else we have, it has used the term introductory status. We don't have, we don't have any reference to introductory status anywhere else in the employee policy handbook. It's probationary. So we've updated that. The really big change is here at the bottom with adding a seasonal employee category. We've had a seasonal employee, Vinnie Lopoli was a seasonal employee, but it was never on the employee category list. So once we update this, I'm going to change the PAR to include seasonal so that we're actually matching what we're, you say we do. I worked with, in particular, I, I reached out to peers. I read other town category lists for a definition of seasonal employee, but I really worked very closely with Craig on this because he really has the seasonal employees in town. DPW has a couple, and I did check in with Eric. But the important piece is that they are not eligible for overtime.
What do you mean when you say they're not eligible?
So lifeguards, lifeguards around maintenance, they are, they have a particular Department of Labor rule that they follow, where if they work a holiday, it's time and a half. But if they, they, they can work more than 40 hours and not, not gain any time.
And that's legal?
It is. It is, it is. That, that is a particular thing for lifeguards and for camp counselors. Yeah, it really is. I know it's.
Anyone have any questions?
Okay.
Okay.
You have to approve it because it's a change.
Yes.
I gave you a motion on this, definitely.
I'm under the next one.
I move to approve, I move to accept the updates to the Town of Amherst Employee Policy Handbook for Section 201, Employment Categories As Proposed.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
You're free.
Please.
Mr. Chairman, we have a revised MS-1 to sign. After we approved and the staff submitted the original MS-1, we had a revised inventory of utility equipment from Energy North. Because it was so shortly after we had filed, we were able, we, the staff was able to contact the state and they said, we'll go ahead and submit a corrected MS-1. By doing that, we avoid having to go through an abatement procedure. So we have tonight the revised MS-1, and I move to approve and sign the revised MS-1 summary evaluation.
Second. Questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Nothing for assessing today?
That's it.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, I move to approve one fiscal year 23 payroll manifest in the amount of $256,664.98 dated August 25, 2022, subject to review and audit.
Second. Questions, comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
I move to approve one fiscal year 23 payroll manifest in the amount of $235,926.90 dated September 8, 2022, subject to review and audit.
Second. Questions, comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
I move to approve one fiscal year 23 accounts payable manifest in the amount of $33,898.30 dated August 31, 2022, subject to review and audit. This money is going to the DMV.
Second. Questions, comments? And then all those in favor?
Aye.
I move to approve one fiscal year 23 accounts payable manifest in the amount of $3,260,150 and no cents dated September 1, 2022, subject to review and audit. This money is going to the schools.
Second. Questions, comments? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
I move to approve one fiscal year 23 accounts payable manifest in the amount of $850 and no cents dated August 24, 2022, subject to review and audit.
Questions, comments? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
I move to approve one fiscal year 23 accounts payable manifest in the amount of $1,586,784.79 dated August 30, 2022, subject to review and audit.
Second. Questions, comments? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
It's unanimous.
I move to approve the Board of Selecting meeting since August 22, 2022.
Second.
Any suggested edits to those minutes?
Nope.
None, all those in favor approving the minutes?
Aye.
It's unanimous. All right, that brings us, Danielle, to action items.
Right, I've got, we'll request a dean, and I wouldn't really talk about it, but to look at space issues in Town Hall, since that was, that's been brought up by the directors. I don't know if this is anything you have to do, do, Dean, to kind of matter to homeowners of what we voted on tonight? I don't know if that, you have actually anything to do. Oh, I guess you have to notify Penn Druck, right? And I was out of the room when the, when Dean and Chris were going to do with the Comcast, but you're doing something in Comcast.
Checking back on the five years and.
The added locations?
Yes.
And I think that's what I have.
Anyone? Dean, do you have anything else?
You had mentioned wanting to get somebody from Micro-Tive in here to talk about ransomware stuff. And then I just got to get this thing, somehow I swept through the fact that you told me to sign that trailer agreement to do that and get it to Jared.
Oh.
So that's it.
And you have a signed copy of that already from Jared?
I do, it's sitting, it's sitting right here. That's what made me think of it. I looked at it, and I must have been looking at it while you were making the motion, because I blanked out the motion, but yeah.
Old or new business, Bill?
So the planning board was scheduled to hear citizen petitions on proposed zoning amendment changes. It was 10:30 by the time we got to that. So this Friday afternoon at 5 o'clock, we're having a special meeting. And that's the only thing on the agenda.
I'm grateful we have one member to HDC. Now we're still looking for two alternates, which really help out.
You have, you don't have any other applicants that you're aware of yet?
No, I, I had one person, and Easy Klein is, he's loved to have an increase in his family of twins. So that takes precedent over, they're still in the district.
So in case everybody forgot, there's an election tomorrow at the high school. In addition to the election, there is a joint facilities advisory committee meeting at 5 o'clock in the Brick Schoolhouse. I will not be attending because I'll be at the school. There will also be a CIP meeting on Thursday at 4 o'clock, which is either the last or the second-to-last meeting, depending on whether Cris Buchanan shows up to talk about the Bike Ped Committee. If he doesn't, then we may make it the last meeting and do our bit about moving things around till we've leveled the load on the taxpayers. But either way, it's either the second-to-last or last meeting of the CIP. And that's it for the week.
And I've got the NHMA conference this week. They asked for a delegate to be appointed, and I would like to be that delegate. I don't think we participated in three years or whatever. I was on a subcommittee for this, there are three subcommittees that sent proposals.
Everybody in agreement with that?
You got it.
Thank you for volunteering to do that. I have nothing. I will see you all way, way too soon.
Couple hours?
Yes.
Move to adjourn. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.